You're watching Cable 2.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome back to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education, regular board meeting, November 17th, 2020. Again, I'm Shay Woodbury, Chair of the Board, and I appreciate everyone's attendance tonight, and also say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation?
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Amen to our needs and our strength in trouble. In this challenging and uncertain time of global pandemic and public peril, we come before ye for your guidance. Bless each of us tonight, and let us make very good decisions. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Agenda Review. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moved. There are questions of discussion? All in favor? Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes.
Board Member Bramer?
Yeah.
Board Member Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. The next item is the Public Comments on the Agenda Items. At this time, we will hear public comments on the Agenda Items only. Please know we reserve this time to hear comments only on the items that are on tonight's agenda, either for action or discussion. Direct your comments to me as the Chair, and know that while we are not able to respond, I may direct you to a staff member that can answer any questions when appropriate. We do ask that you be respectful, kind, and know we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. Please know that due to the number of calls for the Agenda Items tonight, we will keep the comments at one minute, and I will try to be as concise as I can around making sure we're right at the one-minute timeframe when you make your comments. As usual, because we're trying to manage two spaces, one virtually and one live, we are going to try to accommodate those whom are here in person first. So I ask for those whom are online patients while we get through this process. So the first person we have in person is Amanda Yocely. And if you can please just step at the green line there.
Dear Board Members, A teacher and a group of employees released a very insulting video yesterday. The video showed some teachers threatening to turn their backs on the school board and in turn on our children. That group does not represent the hard-working teachers I know who would never turn their backs on our children. These teachers are our heroes. They have done more good in the past few weeks for our kids than any one person could imagine. They know remote learning is not working for our children, and I am beyond grateful that they care for the children they have been entrusted with. Please continue bringing our children back in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ashley Wallace.
Good evening. Let me start off with my son. Last week, he was able to start in-person kindergarten. The change in him has already been amazing. He's no longer hitting himself in the head and saying he's stupid. Every day is not ended in tears. He told me, "Mom, my teacher is the most beautiful, best teacher in the world. He is becoming my happy child again." And for those of you that voted for him to go back, I thank you, and my son thanks you. Now, back in March, myself and millions of other essential workers were called upon. We had a choice: stay in work so that others could get what they need, or leave. We chose to stay for others. We never turned our backs. We stepped forward. Our children need in-person learning. It is essential. Please don't turn their backs on our children. Please take a step forward for them. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, we have Frankie Petrie.
In the works of Libby Bridges, "Don't follow the path; go where there is no path and begin the trail." When you start a new trail equipped with courage, strength, and conviction, only then can... The only thing that can stop you is you. COVID is the new path and the new trail. I'm the great-grandmother of four children in this school system. My heart hurts for all the kids. My grandkids are not getting the education they need and deserve. In any crisis, we need to move forward. We have to step out of our comfort zone. So we need to get all of our kids back in school as quickly and as safely as possible. We don't close schools because of the flu, even though there's a vaccine, because people still get the flu because strains mutate. This will also happen with COVID. Even when a vaccine is created, strains will mutate again. Again, COVID is the new path and the new trail.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie. Amy Grubbs?
I would like to share a quote. "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection, and insists that they become the best they can possibly be." That's a quote by an educator named Rita Pearson. This district is full of champion teachers that do not want to turn their backs on effective education for these kids. Let the ones that want to show up do their jobs while following proper, safety precautions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lily Grubbs.
I want to go back to school because my head hurts and my eyes are heavy from looking at a screen all day, and I miss my friends. I want to go back to school because my head hurts from looking at a screen and all day, and I miss my friends.
Thank you, Lily. We are very proud of you, Lily. It takes a lot of courage to come up and speak to us. Thank you. Next, we have Eliah Siddle.
Good evening, Board Members. Thanks for letting some of the kids return to the classroom. There are so many more kids dying to go back to school. Kids are struggling, and staring at a screen all day is not healthy. It is frustrating trying to do school and then homework with no break. What is more difficult is doing it alone. You have given many opportunities for kids to do online school through the virtual academy, or the option of online at their choice school. Many districts went back. Also, many states have been back since the beginning of the school year. Many kids are going to private schools. So are you teaching us that you need money to be educated? But you are doing a really good job. Do not let anyone tell you otherwise. You gave options so people who are against going back to school can be online. Thank you.
Thank you, Eliah. We're proud of you. You're a very courageous young girl. Thank you. Next, we have Lori Matisse.
Good evening, Board Members. Many of you have heard a lot of my emails about my daughter. She's here with me tonight. I just wanted to... The biggest thing is, right now, I feel like I'm being let down by the school system. They're violating my daughter's rights to faith, and I feel at this point I'm choosing between my daughter's mental health or school. And what should I do? I just informed her of school. I will now log her on and get her to school by logging her on. But I will not be continuing to sit with her all day long and stuff, because if she were at school, she would be under the teacher's care and supervision all day long and doing all schoolwork under the supervision of a teacher. I dropped her off at school today.
Thank you, Ms. Matisse. Is Madeline Matisse here?
She's scared to talk, so she wanted to show her poster of what she was trying to do.
Can she come around? Well, okay, we can see it from here. But she can come around. Thank you.
She did this one by herself, but I just wanted to point out this one. Can you read that?
Can you read that for us so that we can know exactly?
I'd rather be dead than keep doing virtual.
Thank you. Madeline, we are very proud of you. You don't have to be afraid to speak to us. Thank you. Next, we have Val Young.
Good evening, Board Members. I feel as if I'm preaching to the choir again. You know where we stand with this right now. But I have to say, are we our brother's keeper? In this pandemic, we are each other's keeper. I worry about the bus drivers who are not taking... Not able to check children to see if they have temps or if they're not doing well. They still have to take them to school. I worry about the TA, who may be around someone, adult, or child, who may have the virus. I worry about the teachers. I worry about the students. I worry, I worry, and I worry. The one thing that I'm not concerned about is the data. As an educator, we always use the data to drive our instructions. We really feel that if we use the CDC guidelines and use the mitigated strategies properly, we would be safe. But we cannot assure that all those things are done all the time. So if we're in a high risk... We're in a very high risk right now for Forsyth County. Even if we use all the mitigated strategies, we're still going to see outbreaks. And we do not want to have rampant outbreaks in our schools. So I will ask you that you make a measure and use it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Next, we have Rhonda Maze.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think no matter what side of this issue you're on, we all can agree we want every child to have a decent and fulfilled educational experience. But we also must do that when it is safe. When it is safe for our children, when it is safe for the staff, when we can make certain that we have the personal protective equipment that is needed and necessary. When it is safe that we can make certain that when the children are on the bus, that the bus drivers are safe as well. Let's please, as Val Young just said, look at the data, and let's go back fully when it is safe. We know the best educational experience any child can have is in the classroom. Thank you.
Next, we have Sarah Jacobson.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Jacobson. I'm a freshman at Reynolds High School. I'm in favor of staying virtual because I don't think it's safe right now. This year alone, there have been 246 casualties due to COVID. I feel like we don't know what the mask policy is, and it's a real problem. Do the bus drivers and teachers have an authority to tell someone to put their mask on? Because I feel like it's not clear. Numbers are rising in our district. I was just looking at the current statistics, and we're in the red zone, when we should be in the green zone if we're going to go back to school. I'm going to finish off by reading, guys, the excerpt of Charles Dickens' The Christmas Carol, because, you know, we're going into the holiday season. Okay. "They are man, said the spirit, looking down upon them, and they cling to me, appealing from their fathers. This boy is ignorant; this girl is want. Beware them both, and all their degree. But most of all, beware this boy; for on his brow I see that is written, which is doom. Unless the writing be erased, deny it." Thank you for your guys' time. Have a very happy Thanksgiving, and be grateful you still have your health.
Thank you, Sarah. We're proud of you. Appreciate you coming out today. Mr. Allen Daniel?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I had a bunch of questions I was going to ask, but I'm going to flip on you. I would like to share that not every student is actually not getting a good education. My son, with the guidance of his science teacher through videos, has dissected a brain, and he has dissected a heart. No child in that teacher's history has ever dissected a brain because they didn't have time in the classroom to get it done in 55 minutes. My son makes straight A's for the first time in a few years because he has learned how to deal with virtual learning. I understand that it is not working for everybody, but the teachers are busting their buns. They deserve to go when it is safe, not before, and it is not safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Craig Lamontague.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If we're permitted to ask questions, one question I would have for the Board is if you could show me by a show of hands, how many of you have school-aged children attending school in this district? One.
So does...
So two.
How about grandchildren?
Of those two, how many of you have children or grandchildren that are attending private school in Forsyth County? Zero. Good. I'm concerned, if you can understand that as a parent, about the composition of this board, being able to understand the difficulties that not only the families, but that the children are facing in this community. While I'm thrilled for this gentleman's and his son's experience, it is not shared by all. From the beginning of COVID, I've heard about essential workers. When did teachers stop becoming essential workers? You're the hospital administration that's telling the doctors and nurses to stay home.
Thank you, Ms. Lamontague. Next, we have Tamara Lamontague.
Hey. My sixth grader is an HAD student. She left fifth grade with As and Bs. She's failing five classes. She's navigating new platforms and methods of communication that are far beyond her abilities. She left school when she was 10 years old. We have reached out to teachers with no response. She's reached out to teachers, and it has taken days for them to respond to specific classroom questions. We reached out to the principal. It took her three days to return a request from us, and that was only after we reached out to our area superintendent for communication. This is not working. We do have some great teachers who have been super helpful, but there is a breakdown in the communication and accountability.
Thank you, Ms. Lamontague. Ms. Lamontague, I hope that you would leave your information to Brent Campbell so that we can try to respond to you definitely by tomorrow. I appreciate Ms. McManus, if we can provide her family some assistance. As we navigate to the virtual environment, I do want to recognize the overflow of our bus drivers over in the other room, and we definitely want to recognize their service as premier educators in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. And we appreciate all that they do. I was a bus rider all my life, so my bus riders became some of the most beloved people in my public school education experience. So I think we all know the value of all of our educators, particularly our bus drivers in any public school system. Next, we have Ms. Erin Everly. I will remind those whom are calling in that for tonight, because of the number of public comments on Agenda Items, we are limited to one minute. Erin Everly?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Erin Everly, and I'm a staff member at my name of the school. My concern tonight is actually regarding the use of Number 9 disinfectant in our school buildings. I sent an email to all of the Board members yesterday with further documentation and details about the issue with which I wish to discuss. Are you aware that Number 9 has strong warnings on the label? And I quote here, "If on skin or clothing, take off the contaminated clothing. Rinse skin immediately with plenty of water for 15 to 20 minutes." Number 9 is a known skin irritant, and by my unofficial count, five people at my school have had some form of reaction, though thankfully, none as severe as mine. Most seem to have itchy patches on their wrists, coincidentally, where their arms touch the desks while they work. Is this happening in other WSFS buildings? And how would we know? I know it seems overly dramatic to be here complaining about an itch,
Thank you, Ms. Everly.
but that itch...
Next, we have Rhonda...
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Rhonda Connor. Next, we have Tajana Jovanovic-Grove. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. Okay, Ms. Jovanovic-Grove? Mrs. Janice Kraft? Janice Kraft?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Janice Kraft, and I'm a teacher assistant at Whittaker. Last week, I was exposed to a staff member who tested positive for COVID, and I was asked to quarantine along with others. On Friday, I began to have symptoms and tested positive for COVID along with my middle-school daughter. I am here to say that you can wear your mask, social distance, wash hands often, and still catch this deadly disease. I am also here to say thank you to Mott Singer, Bramer, and Burke for your continued compassion and support of teachers and staff. Thank you Superintendent McManus and the Executive Cabinet for amazing leadership and hard work when given the impossible task of reopening schools safely in the middle of a pandemic. Thank you, Mrs. Creasey, and all the other principals in our district who worked tirelessly with a can-do attitude. Lastly, the rest of our Board, I implore you, please close all of our schools until you have a safe plan for reopening and clear metrics in place.
Thank you, Ms. Kraft.
We all want our children back in there.
Ms. Marta Roman? Thank you, Ms. Kraft.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Marta?
Ms. Roman?
Hello?
Hello. Yes, we can hear you. You can start.
Hello?
Hello. Yes, you can start.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Marta Roman, and I'm in a kindergarten dual-emergent classroom. Our kids were doing phenomenally well during virtual learning. We had 18 kids virtually, and only three weren't doing as well as the others. But we were able to provide one-on-one time and give extra help during breakout rooms. Providing instruction to both face-to-face and virtual students is difficult at best. How can we provide the quality of instruction we're used to while trying to keep face-to-face students as well as us safe and still keep virtual learners engaged and on path? This is not a realistic plan. On a side note, we of the district must take responsibility and do our part to help stop the spread of this deadly virus. Now is not the time to let down our guard. Keep us all virtual. We're safe. We're at home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Justin Green.
This is Justin?
Yes, good evening.
This is Justin Green here. Am I good to go?
Yes.
This is Justin Green. I'm a parent of two children. I'm here to advocate for our teachers today. I want my children to have the best education possible. The most essential component aside from my family's support are our teachers. Not long ago, the Houston Independent School District showed up at our North Carolina Teachers Fair. Simple law: leave North Carolina and come to Houston and get a 50% pay rate. Many did. USA Today on September 10th of this year compared teacher salaries to the cost of living and found that North Carolina ranked 45 out of our 50 states. I know we're about to see slides that say teacher vacancies are higher than last year, but not at an alarming level. Problem is, it doesn't speak to what's going to happen in our future. Teachers are scared and upset. They're not allowed to speak out, but several are still speaking out. I know that several on the Board might say that recent exposures weren't related to school. The problem is, teachers don't see it that way. They're not soldiers who fight wars expecting to risk their lives. They don't get hazard pay as indicated it should be done by the England Journal of Medicine. They expect to mold our children into future leaders. A demotivated, scared teacher is no way to craft our future leaders.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
...
Thank you. Ms. Shonada Shepherd? Ms. Shepherd? Ms. Shepherd?
Hello?
Yes. Good evening.
Can... Hi, good evening. I come to you as a parent this evening. My husband and I, we are just so thankful that God has granted our family the ability to have our kindergartner and age-freader continue remote learning with our age-freader as the AG who has expelled, continued with all AIDS during remote learning. While so many other parents, including teachers, either don't have that option, that option has had a negative impact on their child's mental health, or just simply it's been bad for their child's learning style, we understand as a community wholeheartedly. We desperately want the children in person, but the uncertainties outweigh those desires as COVID numbers are rampant throughout this country and for personally our county. As my sister, who is a fifth-grade teacher, has stated, and her school has been... Has COVID in it as well, has told me, "I'd rather fight with my child to stay seated in front of a computer than for them to have to possibly fight for their lives if it's impacted something."
Next, we have Tyler Vayey.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. My name's Tyler Vayey. I am a parent of a fifth-grader and a seventh-grader at Hazly. My... I have just two really quick points. I think that closing this really should be a no-brainer. We are at 13.2%. Every other state, especially in the Northeast, they're at 3%, and they close. 13.2% is too high. So as far as being closed, I do think that's a no-brainer. And as far as teachers, our teachers virtually are fantastic. This is the most accessible we've ever been. We have teachers calling us at 10 o'clock at night to discuss grades, so we don't have to panic as parents. Our teachers are amazing. We've had a great experience virtually. And what I worry about is teachers leaving. They are stressed. They have to leave a job they love because of their fear of being in a classroom. This is not safe. The job of the school is to provide a safe place for my kids to learn the ABCs, and that's not being provided.
Thank you, Ms. Vayey.
And our teachers are suffering.
Next, we have Tina Chutanich.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Good evening. Here's what we're dealing with. We are in a deadly pandemic that is worse than when it started in March. We have a massive surge of COVID-19 in Forsyth County, and we know that the current rise of infections among teachers and staff and community members is a direct result of reopening the schools. We know we need more than supplies. We need an immediate closure of schools until we can get this pandemic under control, and we need you to do the right thing. And we need you to do the right thing. People are dying. Thank you, board members Mott, Singer, Burke, and Braemer for doing the right thing. And I implore the rest of the board to follow board members Mott, Singer, Burke, and Braemer. Please end in-person instruction today and prevent death. Wait until after the holiday to open up the buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maria Butner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm an EC teacher and I'm thanking you for allowing me to speak. We are in school right now and I want to say that many of our students cannot wear their masks due to physical or medical needs. In my personal classroom, our students depend on hand-over-hand assistance or they need to touch an adult to figure out with whom they're communicating. During lunch, several don't eat traditional meals, but they're walking around the room because they're frustrated at staying in class all day and that is very unsafe for our staff since we are unmasked and eating during meals in class. I'm coming to you and imploring you as an educator, a parent, a grandparent, a sister, and a daughter. Please look at the science and think about your own families because personally, my family is very concerned about my safety each day as I go to school. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Next, we have Michelle Jordan. Ms. Jordan. Michelle Jordan.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Okay, sorry. So thank you for letting me speak. One of the things that I want to bring up tonight, and I know that you're going to be sharing some data that's going to talk about how this might be spread from a different way. But you have to look at the number that the teachers that have been back in the building and the staff that have been back full-time the longest are the elementary staff. And as of today, we have one hundred and forty of us in quarantine compared to fifty-five total in middle and high school. And when you look at that and you start thinking about my school that has somebody out with COVID and now we have two first-grade teachers out this week, we already are covering the classroom because compared to the nine-hundred-and-something subs that says that they're in the subsystem, we really don't have that and we're already covering rooms. Now, we have about five other staff members that are out as well because of quarantined. And if they actually had students in the building, who would be covering those classrooms? This is like a domino effect and this is one of the things that we brought up and what we know we're going to keep happening. And as we start bringing back in more students, we're going to start having more-
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Next, we have Jenny Easter. Jenny Easter. Jenny Easter. Kate Duffy. Ms. Kate Duffy.
Hello. I am here tonight to talk as not only a teacher, but as a parent. I am a parent of a child with type-one diabetes and I have grown increasingly concerned about the fact that information is not being shared with parents. Tests are once again, COVID tests are once again being used sparingly in our community. And that means when a parent tests positive, they are told to assume that their child, that their children are also positive and to quarantine for fourteen days. But because there is no test for that child, because the medical community will not provide a test, they're therefore not recognized by the educational system as being positive, which means no one is being notified that there is a positive child in their classroom or a possible positive child in their classroom. This is becoming an increasingly more dangerous situation.
Next, we have Edith Noyella Cisneros. Edith Noyella Cisneros. Next, we have Matthew Poston. Matthew Poston.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Good evening. The stakeholders of this community have been led to believe there would be monitors on all the buses. There would be a safety check at the bus stop. However, the district thought it was better not to impede traffic, putting an additional two to three minutes wait for drivers over the safety of our children. Bus drivers have been, we have been led to believe bus drivers have the appropriate PPE and additional protection between them as scholars board the bus. Drivers ask for partitions and the district's response, buses cannot be retrofitted because they are owned by the state. They have been led to believe teachers have a choice whether they can work remotely or on-site. However, teachers and staff are sitting in empty school buildings doing the same work they can do remotely, yet subjecting themselves to the virus by being around others. Some members of this board have cherry-picked a narrative full of fallacies and distrust. This includes a board member who has chosen to pit parents against teachers. Many of our scholars struggled even when in-person learning was the norm. However, the prevalence was just easier to hide. Now, a few board members want to act like they care and use this narrative as a concern for reopening.
Thank you, Mr. Poston. Next, we have Elizabeth Paramo.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
This is Jenny Easter and I think there was technical difficulties because it wasn't letting me unmute myself.
Yes.
May I have a chance to speak?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. You know how you push the notion COVID doesn't spread in school settings? And then have people believing they accidentally caught it from community spread? When you aren't transparent in schools. Policy states, we can only let other parents in our class know of a possible exposure if we have a verified positive case. We had several students go on quarantine last week because they had positive cases in their households. Some were denied a test because they weren't showing symptoms. Some parents said they weren't even going to try. This is a problem because we know children tend to be asymptomatic, but that doesn't mean they're any less contagious. When we aren't able to get a confirmed test, but our other children have more than likely been exposed, it's ridiculous that we can't legally make their parents swear. As an educator and as a mother, I find this very alarming. Mitigating strategies are subjective. We can all do our best, but there's no actual way to verify. Everyone is accurately following these guidelines. FYI, we technically spend over an hour without our masks when we have to eat breakfast, snack, and lunch all together in the classroom. Think about that.
Thank you. Next, we have Elizabeth Paramo. Elizabeth Paramo. Okay, next, we have Carolyn King. Carolyn King.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak this evening. I hesitated to take advantage of this opportunity during public comments for fear of becoming part of the problem rather than the solution. But I chose to call in this evening because as a parent of four children and a teacher in this district, I know firsthand the importance of us getting this decision right. I also know there are no good answers and nothing I say this evening will change the way you vote. But what I wanted to do was offer these thoughts instead. We are in the middle of a global pandemic and the news has all been leaked. Every meeting we've had has turned into a war of wills and opinions about metrics and we are all facing the reality that we may never agree. However, what needs to be heard and in the forefront of our hearts and minds as we navigate this next part is how resilient and amazing our children and staff are and what a phenomenal job we are doing trying to teach and learn in the most unprecedented times in our lives. As an EC teacher, I'm not blind to what lacks in remote learning, but when I reframe the issue and look at it in a different light, I see students making connections with their teachers in classes.
Thank you, Ms. King. Next, we have Mary Heaton. Alicia Smith.
Hello, this is Elizabeth Paramo. Can you hear me?
Elizabeth Paramo, yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, there was a glitch and so I'm hoping that I have a chance to speak.
Yes, go ahead. You have one minute. Thank you.
Okay. I'm a NEOTEL teacher at Hallwood Elementary and I'm here today to voice my concerns. I'm a teacher, I'm a mother, and I am scared. I think as teachers, we should always be able to go to work safely. We would encourage you, board, please and Superintendent, please stick to the metric. Cases are rising. Please provide buses with thermometers. Teachers have so much to do, so much to worry about, and we are scared. We want to educate our children, but we want to do it safely. Please, we ask you, stick to the metric. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Heaton. Next, we have Alicia Smith. Alicia Smith.
Hello?
Hello?
Yes, hi. I'm an EC teacher in a self-contained classroom and my students do not understand the concept of a pandemic or safety in a pandemic. It is impossible to maintain six feet and they are not wearing a mask all day. It is also unfair that most people don't have a choice and must come to work because they have bills to pay, putting their health, the health of their families, students, and other staff members at risk. We are pulling more just to make sure we stay safe. Also, there are challenges that schools face when staff are quarantined and you have parents not taking the pandemic seriously and send students knowing that they have symptoms. We have staff such as myself who have parents that live with them or have underlying conditions and they have to make decisions of seeing and caring for their parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kristen Rose.
Can you- Can you hear me?
Yes.
Before you make a decision, I want to give you a glimpse into the reality of Plan B in action through the lens of an elementary specialist. Every morning, we stick our upper bodies into parents' cars to help unbuckle seatbelts and lift kids out of car seats, thus exposing ourselves to everyone in the car, most of whom are not wearing masks. Please tell me, how are we to be contacted if any of these passengers have COVID? Office staff take thermometer readings of each vehicle that enters. When the initial reading is over ninety-eight degrees, the cars turn their heaters off and roll down their windows until their temperatures come back into a quote "safe zone." Please tell me how we are supposed to get an accurate reading using such a method. Young children struggle to wear their masks properly for more than a few minutes at a time and some flat-out refuse to do so. Our work often involves holding hands, putting backpacks on, helping with buckles and zippers, and even putting students' masks on their faces for them. Please tell me how we're supposed to perform these tasks while staying six feet apart.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Next, we have Molly Muse.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Our opening metrics were at or below five percent positive testing rate, but we exceeded that and modified the metrics to moderate risk. We exceeded the moderate risk range and now we're within the highest risk range. We're going into holiday and flu season and it's going to get worse. We've emphasized the importance of mitigating strategies, but they aren't followed in the community and won't be followed in schools, especially when older, less compliant, bless them, students return. Many students have told us about being exposed to COVID at parties or testing positive for COVID, but they're not following mitigating strategies. Masks are crucial, but students will take masks off to eat lunch in the classrooms and talk loudly in what to move around. School won't be normal. I'll see my students four times a month. Learning is happening virtually. The regular routine of remote learning is better for learning than a disruptive hybrid plan. They get more attention now than in a hybrid scenario. Double-duty teaching will wear teachers down, making us more susceptible to viruses. We had a sub shortage before. What's going to happen when teachers have to quarantine? It's not safe to reopen until we have a district-wide plan, adequate PPE and lower metrics. Please return to virtual learning until we know it's safe for everyone.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Peter Antonozzi. Dr. Peter Antonozzi.
Good evening. Tonight, I ask a favor to my fellow parents. A comprehensive plan is essential for safely reopening schools during a global pandemic. Can in-person learning occur safely when cases are at all-time high? Without a comprehensive plan, absolutely not. The school board has assured us that they have a working plan in place, but they do not. This board has not listened to their teachers and bus drivers and has not followed the guidance of health professionals. The board will, however, listen to parents and voters, so I ask a favor to the parents. Please email your favorite board member with this one question. Where can I find the pandemic operational plan for my school? Maybe the board member will email your request to the school principal. Perhaps they'll send you a PowerPoint. My hope is the PowerPoint includes plans for risk mitigation remediation of classroom ventilation concerns. But if you do not receive an acceptable plan, then I next ask you to not send your child into school building. It is not safe without a plan. Thank you and have a happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. Same to you. Ms. Toni Brooks.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Three years ago, on the first day of school, I had a massive heart attack and emergency surgery. My name is Toni Brooks. I'm a twenty-five-year veteran teacher and I am in favor of returning to Plan C. I've earned Teacher of the Year in two counties, Teacher of the Year for a district, Walmart's Teacher of the Year, and several other accolades along the way. However, none of these accolades will keep me safe in a school building. Like most teachers, I give to my students even when I have little. But asking me to go into a battlefield of COVID germs and risk my life is above my call of duty. Teachers were required to return to the building a few weeks ago. A teacher assistant and my friend caught COVID and passed away two weeks later. So on behalf of myself, my son, and many others, I beg of you to return to Plan C.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Trip Jeffers. Trip Jeffers. Trip Jeffers.
Hello?
Yeah?
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Good evening.
Can you hear me, Ms. Weaver? Okay, I think we're having technical difficulties tonight. Trip Jeffers, Parkland High School. There is not an educator in this county who doesn't want to return to school and see our students face-to-face and would never turn our backs on them. We are teaching them daily right now. But we do turn our backs on officials who turn their backs on safety and science. At the current rate, if you continue to march down this trepidatious path, you invite calamity. For every classroom door you open, you potentially open the door to this virus, to hospital rooms, and God forbid, to funeral homes. I have delivered to you tonight at 6:30 PM, just before the meeting, via email, a petition on behalf of the Forsyth Educator Advocacy Forum, signed by over three thousand members of the community, over nine hundred of whom are parents. Please read the five demands of that petition and take it very seriously. The lives of our staff, our families, and our students depend upon it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Madison Matthews, who is a student.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Hello, my name is Madison Matthews. I'm in fourth grade. I am here to talk about our safe return to school. Well, first of all, the safe return to school is not even safe. You expect me to learn math and science in school. Fearless, you are setting a bad example by saying these numbers do not matter and you do not care about science. You expect me to wear a mask when not all the students are required to. Both my mom and sister are back at school. They should not even be in school. Their lives are at risk and as well as everybody else in the building. I certainly don't want to go back when it's time for me to. I want to go back only when it's safe and safe to me means a good plan. Our metrics are way too high. We are at like fourteen percent positive. You also say children cannot pass it on. You know who says they can? My dad, who's a family medicine doctor. What if they got it and came to school and passed all the screening questions but still passed it on to someone who is immune-compromised or elderly? So in conclusion, we are not ready to go back to school and we do not have a safe plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. We appreciate you calling in and we're proud of your courage. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Louise Ellis. Next, we have Edna Suggits.
Hello?
Hello. Good evening.
Yes. I am, good evening. I am a teacher and a parent. At the school that I work, kindergarten students were forced to start without their teachers in person. With that being said, the TAs were forced to cover those classrooms, and my students did not receive the small, flexible groups that they should have received. Without teachers in the classroom, students are not receiving the education that they should receive. We know that it's important for our teachers to be there. Without the teachers being there, the students will receive subs who don't know the required material to teach to the students. Teachers are constantly told to use data when planning instruction, but I'm not seeing the board using the data. I was forced to send my student, my child, back to school because as a teacher, I am not sure of what will happen when I, um, return, when my students return. I ask you to not continue to send school children to school and to please stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. John Seegers. Next, we have Amber Vargas. Next, we have Karen Petty. Next, we have Tracy Latta.
Um, e- excuse me, um, Chair Woodbury?
Yes.
Hello? I think it's hard for people to get on, and so you got to give them a little bit more time before they can get unmuted and get on. But thank you so much. I know it's a lot.
Yes, I'm getting a same message. I'm getting multiple texts saying that they cannot get on. They're trying, and they don't have, cut them off before they can make it.
Kevin is managing this, and he has a statement.
Yes, board members, I have numbers. I have the numbers of those that are-
This is Edna Seegers, and you cut me off to let another lady come on. This is Edna Seegers, and you cut me off to let another lady come on.
You, your one minute was up, Ms. Suggit. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
So, this is Ms. Seegers. This is Ms. Seegers. You never let me come in.
Okay, well, we can get you. We have John Seegers.
If I can explain.
Yes.
Folks are calling in from numbers that they didn't sign up.
Could you mute? Could you mute them?
John's not speaking. I'm speaking, and I was before the lady that cut in front of me. You didn't give me time to unmute and come on.
Oh, okay. So let's let her do the, um, minute, and then we'll get instruction from Kevin since we having issues with the muting. So, Ms. Seegers, could you go ahead? Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I, first of all, I would say thank you for letting me speak. I want to thank Mrs. Mott Singer, Mrs. Burke, and Mrs. Bremer for their opinion. I think I am a retired teacher. I understand where parents are coming from, wanting in the building, but it is not safe. I want you to think about, you said you were going to use metrics before, but then you decided to use your emotions. I hope and pray this time, you do not use your emotions and you just use metrics. These children have emotions, and if they lose a classmate or they lose a teacher, you will not be able, as a parent, to console that child. So when you decide tonight to what you're going to do, please use your metrics instead of your emotions, because right now, it is not safe. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm not exactly sure who that was, because that was supposed to be John Seegers. So I guess that was a Ms. Seegers.
That was Edna Seegers.
That was Edna again, okay.
So, would these join with the number that we didn't have?
Okay, we'll get it cleaned up. Folks are joining with numbers that they didn't sign up, that they would be calling from, and that's what's creating the confusion. I would say let's go back to line, Mr. John Seegers and start from there, and we'll give them time to respond, even though I don't see those numbers as joined to the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. John Seegers?
This is John Seegers. John Seegers is not speaking. I just spoke.
Thank you. Uh, Amber Vargas?
Uh, Amber Vargas?
Amber Vargas? Okay. Karen Petty? Tracy Latta?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Tracy Latta, and I'm an ELA teacher at Reynolds High School. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My concern tonight is for everyone's safety, and I'm particularly concerned with the fate of our compromised faculty and staff. While students have been given the opportunity without impunity to choose their learning situation, teachers have not. I'm a double transplant recipient with an incredibly low immune system. I would not make it if I were to get COVID. I was approved for ADA, and I was told I did not have to return on November thirtieth, but I am expected to return on January twenty-fifth. I'm perplexed as to why that is, because my condition does not go away on Jan. twenty, January twenty-fifth. When you're told you're expected to return under these circumstances, it feels as if you're being told you're an acceptable loss. None of us are an acceptable loss. None of us are collateral damage. I'm asking for better protections for those of us who desperately want to be back in our classrooms with our students and also want to make it through this pandemic alive. There are no amount of condolences or apologies that can replace a teacher or a student.
Thank you, Ms. Latta.
I'm asking that you consider doing the right thing.
Next, we have Brenda Black. Next, we have Andrea Brett. Andrea Brett?
If I, if I can explain, I see those numbers called in. They must be, they have to hit star six to unmute their phones. We can't control that, and I assume that's the problem they're having, but I see that number joined. Andrea Brett's number is on the line, but that's all I can explain about it.
Okay. Thank you. And just to the other board members, as I have tried to explain, and and also to the community at large, we're trying to manage two environments, live and virtual, and as you could imagine, the technology is is limited, and so we appreciate, again, everyone's patience as we try to navigate, um, both environments, you know, effectively. So I think we're still trying to get Andrea Brett, but maybe there's some technical difficulties, so we'll, um, move forward, and hopefully she will, um, come in. But Tammy Martinez? Octavia Miller? C.T. Daniels?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm a parent, the wife of a teacher, and a former teacher myself. I resigned a month ago due to concern over this district's lack of a safe metric-based plan for reentry. Since my resignation, all teachers have returned to my former school building, and there have been three positive COVID-nineteen cases. I fear for my school family's safety daily, but this only confirms that I made the right choice. Many parents in the community are under the impression that teachers actually have choices, and I want to make it very clear that we don't. The only options are to take unpaid leave or quit. My husband is an uncle teacher at another school in this district. He has two-hundred-and-thirty-six students currently on his roster. We have not exposed ourselves to that many people total during this entire pandemic, and you are asking him and all teachers to throw away the past eight months of diligence right as the holiday season approaches. I'm appalled and flabbergasted at the board's lack of disregard for science over the past several weeks. I'm not sure if it's due to politics or something more in favor, but to completely ignore all metrics and data and put thousands of lives at risk is morally irreprehensible.
Thank you. Chris Ward?
Hello? No, no.
Hello, I hope you're coming in okay.
Hello? This is C.T. Daniels. Hello?
H- hello?
Can you hear me?
Y- y- yes. Is, could you, um, give us your name, please?
Hello? It's C.T. Daniels.
Okay, we, we thought we had you on a minute ago, but nevertheless, you can move forward.
Well, thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the fourth grader who called in earlier who clearly understands metrics than all but three of our board members. Secondly, I think it's rich that you guys with a full team there on the board can't navigate a live and virtual environment, but you expect your teachers to do the same in Plan B. If you guys can't do it, how do you expect them to do it on a widespread scale? Secondly, when I joined the Army to serve this country, I signed a contract knowing my life was at danger. I was compensated as such, and I trusted our leadership to make good decisions to keep me safe. These teachers didn't sign a contract knowing their life was at danger, and your decisions are causing them to not trust their leadership. I was told when I served that leadership is solved in problems, and the day that soldiers stop bringing you their problems is the day you stop leading them. You guys are tipping dangerously close to that line right now. We already lost one soldier in the system. Is that acceptable? Because that blood is on your hands.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Next, we have Chris Ward.
Hello, I hope I'm coming in okay.
Yes, this is Chris Ward?
Yes, this is Chris Ward.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm a former teacher, and I have two children who attend Moore Elementary. Now, when we're discussing our safe return, more emphasis needs to be put on the word "safe." Safe for students, safe for faculty, staff, and administration, and safe for their families. The best way to do this is to follow the data and guidelines set out by the Health Department. Their data showed it wasn't safe for a return in late October. It's not safe now either. We are in code red. Forcing children back into the school building puts them in danger. I also want to thank teachers, staff, and administrators who are urging caution tonight and this week and this past month. Employees should not be muzzled and kept from answering questions. Instead, there needs to be open communication and data sharing, because COVID-nineteen is not going away. Opening schools now is saying to teachers, may the odds be ever in your favor, and then sending them off to die. More teachers will get infected. Teachers have already died. Remember, this is supposed to be our safe-
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Next, we have Alexis Calendar. Next, we have Leah Binfield.
I don't see the next three online, but let's give them a second, just in case, if they called in on a different number that they didn't register with.
Okay, um, so Chantel Hawkins? Carol Green? Celeste Holcomb? Yes, Celeste Holcomb?
Hi.
Good evening.
I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry. Weird, um, so, I'm still talking. I'm calling because, um, my, uh, friends and loved ones are employees in the school system, and they have, um, been told that the facilities are being cleaned, but they aren't. Um, one of them recently came to school, and there was not even toilet paper, um, or soap. And, uh, this was after the deep cleaning that was supposedly happening. Um, there's this, it's just theater, all, all that you're doing that's safety-related, like, we should not be here. No one should be going to public places. There's no point to this, um, except for some kind of capitalist dream. Please let everybody go home and be safe. This doesn't make any sense. I yield my time.
Thank you. Amy Matthews?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Two weeks ago, I was told by an administrator at Central Office that the school board couldn't help me. I want you to prove them wrong tonight. Tonight, I want you to show your concern for our students, the ones who are being quarantined, the ones who are in our EC programs, who are often unmasked and at three times the risk of death from COVID, the teachers who are yet again being placed in an impossible situation, the teacher assistants who are filling in the gaps of short staffing and lack of subs, the bus drivers who are concerned for their safety as they transport dozens of sometimes unmasked children, our administrators who are moving heaven and earth to make it work and desperately trying to keep up staff morale, the porters who are stretched too thin before and are completely overwhelmed now, to the parents who are concerned for the safety of their children when they receive the dreaded email there's been a case at their school. Look at the data. We've gone back too early, and the time will soon come when our students will have to transition back home. Our children don't deserve these extra-
If we can go back and catch two, Andrea Brett is on the line.
Okay, um, Andrea Brett? Mrs. Brett?
Not Andrea Brett. Okay. Uh, line three, which was, uh, Ta- Jana Grove?
Okay.
She's emailed me. She is on the line.
Mrs. Grove?
Hello? Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. Good evening, everyone. I'm a high school science teacher, and for the past, uh, for the past three and a half months, I've been struggling with a COVID-like illness, with the consequences. The CT scan shows irreparable damage to respiratory system and pericardium. Not everyone is that lucky that they're alive. We are educators because we deeply care, and we are invested in prosperity of our community. We are working harder now than in person due to the nature of the content delivery, and I can tell you that our students are learning, our educators are working hard. We have built relationships with our students that in some cases is even better than if we are in person. This is not only about the loss of life. It is, it is about the long-term consequences of the illnesses that is nothing that has been seen before, and different people react differently. So young people are now experiencing severe consequences. Instead of us rushing back and risk lives-
Okay, we actually got Andrea Brett up around that C.T. Daniels confusion, so I think we've got all the callers now. Chair Woodbury?
Okay, thank you. And thanks, everyone, again, for the patience of trying to, um, work through getting everyone, um, through public comments on the agenda items. The next agenda item is discussion items, and the first discussion item we have is the budget resolution by, um, Ms. Gillis, our chief financial officer.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
I'm going to share my screen and put up the presentation. So tonight, I'm here to talk about the proposed budget for adoption for fiscal year 2021, our current fiscal year. Not much has changed since the last, not much has changed since the last time we reviewed the bu- the proposed budget for adoption. We did get additional funds from the state that I did include to raise the state current expense fund to three-hundred-and-sixty-five million, oh-twenty-six, nine-ninety-five. The federal grants are seventy-one million, six-sixty-four, eight-seventy-eight. The local current expense fund is one-hundred-and-thirty-four million, eighty-nine, oh-seventy-two, and our other restricted special revenue is sixteen million, nine-ninety-six, three-seventy-five, for a grand total of the operating, total operating budget of five-eighty-seven, nine-seventy-seven, three-twenty. In addition, we have capital outlay, county appropriation of three million, nine-sixty-six, four-fifty-six, and our local bond proceeds, which is primarily carryover from last year's bond proceeds that we had not spent, of one-thirty-five, two-twenty, two-forty-two. In addition, we have the child nutrition budget of twenty-four million, nine-forty-seven, seven-seventy-three, for a total proposed budget of seven-fifty-two, one-eleven, seven-ninety-one. This next slide just shows a comparison of the proposed budget versus the request, and as you can see, most items are pretty close to what we requested. I mean, the state item is pretty close to what we requested. The federal grants is significantly higher due to the CARES Act funding. The local current expense, county appropriation, is less because we weren't funded the, um, textbook funds, nor were we funded the funds for our sort of, um, classified salary increase. We also have, um, less other local revenue than proposed due to a shift in how I classify the, uh, other local revenue. I shifted it to other special revenue. And then as well, we have the other special revenue, which is essentially the same, except for that difference that I shipped it over. The proposed budget highlights, we had three, thirty-one-point-five additional teacher positions- The proposed budget highlights, we had 31.5 additional teacher positions for House Bill 90, class size reduction. The retirement rate for this year is 21.68%, which is a 10% increase over the 1920 rate of 19.7%. The state health insurance premium increased to 63.26% for this fiscal year, which is a .3 increase over the prior year premium of 63.06. The budget also includes a 1% step increase for certified staff, which includes teacher support staff and assistant principals. And then, it also includes a $350 bonus for our teachers and certified support staff. Other items included in the budget are the county appropriation. You know, base was reduced for $3.7 million for the reserve for supplements that was allotted in the prior fiscal year. In addition, we got the $11 million in sales tax revenue from the quarter cent sales tax increase that funded the local teacher supplement increases for this year. And then, also, we included the one-time funding for the 3% bonus for non-certified staff. This will be funded with the one-time savings due to closure related to the current COVID-19 pandemic. And this next slide is the proposed county budget with a little more detail. We start out with the $125,913,734, which is our base budget. We had to reduce our budget for the local reserve for local supplements, $3.7 million. We transferred $2.2 million from capital outlay funds to the operating budget. We reduced our budget by $4.3 million. We had to increase our budget for the step increase, the health insurance rate, and the retirement rate increase. That total was $1.5 million. And also, we added the $11 million in the quarter cent sales tax supplement. That leaves us with the total county appropriation, just of the operating budget, of $132,689,072, which is a $6.8 million increase over the prior year. Now, I'm going to unshare this screen and share the budget resolution. So here we have our budget resolution for the current fiscal year that we want to get adopted. I'm not going to read over all the purpose codes. This really has not changed since the last time we discussed this at a board meeting. Our grand total of our current expense fund appropriation is $134,289,072. That includes $132,689,072 in county appropriation and $1.6 million in other local revenues. The next section is our state current expense, I'm sorry, state public school fund appropriation. It's $365,026,995. And that's all, you know, state funds, state revenue. The next section is $71,664,877. And that's broken down by these categories here, with the various grants that we get from, and federal grants. This amount has not changed since the last time we presented to the board. Capital outlay, $139,086,698, which is comprised of the $3.9 million in county appropriation and $135 million in bond proceeds carryover. And then, we have $16,996,375 in our other and special revenue. And that's broken down by other state revenue of $2.3 million, federal allocations of $4.3, and other local revenues of $10.3. The next section is our child nutrition fund appropriation. That budget is $24,947,773. And as we talked about in our last board meeting, that's comprised of $16.9 million in federal grants, $3 million in other local revenues, and then, we're going to appropriate $4.9 million of their fund balance to balance their budget for this year. And we'll constantly monitor the child nutrition budget based on participation and, you know, our school closure or non-school closure to make sure that we keep expenses down as much as possible. But that's the budget resolution. Are there any questions?
Yes, I do have a question. I did see where there was an ad for non-certified staff. And maybe I missed this because there was a lot in there. Is there something added in for our certified staff? Is that under another title or something that maybe I missed? Where do we stand on certified staff? I know we've talked about it for quite a while. Could you help me with that, please?
So, certified staff receive the step increase. A lot of our certified staff is paid with state funds. They receive the step increase, and the certified staff also receive the certified supplement increase with the $11 million in sales tax revenue.
And how much did they receive on that?
Well, they got $12.85 additional above what they got last year. You know, they got $7.15 last year with the $3.7 million that the county provided, and they also got an additional $12.85 this year in supplement. And then, they will also move up on the step based on their state salary schedule. And that amount varies per teacher. It's whatever the state determines their rate is based on their years of experience.
Good. I appreciate you explaining that to me. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions?
Okay, this is Board Member Kaplan. Thank you for answering some of my questions earlier. And just would like for you to elaborate again what the impact of the COVID shutdown has had on the 2021 budget. I know you said the operating expenditures have not dramatically changed. And we were talking about some of the savings of the bus drivers, but what about some of the other savings? I mean, what, do you have like a, you know, a figure that we can rely on as far as when it shut down in March as compared to when it was open and the shutdown in the fall? Just trying to get more of a handle on what we have because, as we had mentioned and you had explained, we haven't been receiving the monthly actual versus monthly, I mean, budget versus actual statement since June. So, it's really kind of hard to know exactly where we are right now.
So, anything that, any savings from school closure from March through June 30th is in the prior fiscal year. And we'll recognize those savings in the fund balance once the audit is done and we get an increase in our fund balance. That's where those savings will go. So, you'll see that in the fund balance once the audit is done, because that was a separate fiscal year. This year, we haven't saved a whole lot other than what, you know, we have saved in our SRO contract increase, because we reduced our SRO contract for the current year only. So, we saved about $1.5 million in that. In addition, we saved about $1.5 million so far on transportation and about a half a million in subpay. But I anticipate that subpay is going to go up as we bring kids back in school and as we have COVID cases and the need for more subs. So, right now, we, you know, we have a plan for our savings, which was paying out the bonus. And it's hard to determine what other savings we'll have because it all depends on, you know, what decisions are made as far as reopening. Those are the savings that we have to date.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions?
Thank you, Ms. Gillis. Next, we have the Staff Laptop Deployment Services by Kevin Sherrill, our Assistant Superintendent Information Technology.
Thank you, Chair Woodbury, and good evening, board members, Chair Woodbury, and Ms. McManus. This is a quick review. I'm going to go quickly. This is a review from our work session last week around our seeking approval tonight for, to engage in a contract with Bridge Tech Solutions to bring a team in to help us with our teacher laptop deployment over the next couple of months. As I mentioned to you last week, I have our technology staff working hard on the camera deployment throughout our secondary schools, our middle schools, and moving into high schools after Thanksgiving on the camera installation and sound integration for remote learning. We have additional 9,000 Chromebooks that are starting to show up. We received another couple thousand this week, and our staff are working on moving those out into the schools as well. And in addition to that, our teacher laptops are set to arrive the week after Thanksgiving. So, we've got 3,900 certified teachers that are set to receive a new laptop. And I want to, I would personally like to have those in the teachers' hands as fast as possible since our laptop is an integral part of remote learning and instruction right now. So, we're asking to bring a company in, to bring in a team of seven folks, seven technicians, technical folks from Bridge Tech Solutions, which is one of our partners that we do a lot of work with, to bring them in on a 12-week schedule to work through all of our schools, go to each teacher's classroom to deploy their new laptop, set it up for them. There's a new docking station to connect, retrieve their old laptop, and bring that back in-house. So, we're hoping to get that started the second week of December is our current plan, should everything get approved. And to fund this, as I mentioned to you as well, we'll take 2,000 of our current teacher laptops. There are 5,000, a little over 5,000 out there now. We'll take 2,000 of those, and we have a written bid, an offer on surplus sale from one of our surplus companies that we've done business with in the past of $95 each. So, we're going to recoup $190,000 there to offset the cost of the 12-week contract and still have a surplus of roughly $30,000. In addition to that, that'll leave us about 3,000 laptops that we're going to put into the schools for loners, for substitutes as they come in, and also take roughly 1,000 of those, of the best ones, and get those distributed to our teacher assistants and get a couple more years of life out of those laptops for that staff. So, we just wanted to recap that and as an action item later in the meeting, asking for your approval on that project. Any other questions on that lingering from last week or tonight? Thank you. And I have one other very quick thing. Our State Department has allocated funding to each LEA through some CARES dollars, state dollars, targeted directly toward improving cybersecurity efforts in our districts. We've received $126,000 designated specifically for improving our cybersecurity environment in our district. So, we are electing to utilize that money, per your approval, to move into a one-year subscription with Microsoft's highest level of threat protection, where we'll have a higher level of threat protection on our malware through email, our servers, our endpoints, all of our devices. This is the highest level of threat protection software that they offer, and this gives us a one-year subscription with state funds designated to that. Are there questions about that? These are funds that are spent specifically for this project, or we have to just forego it and give it back to the state. And we were allocated that dollar amount based on our ADM. There was a formula that gave us that dollar amount. All right, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there are no questions of Kevin for the cybersecurity funding, next, we have the middle school redistricting, public hearing with Mr. Huma Attashvar, the Executive Director of Student Assignments.
Good evening, Board Chair Woodbury, members of the board, Ms. McManus. I'm here to go over the presentation. You guys heard this during the work sessions last week during the Buildings and Grounds Committee, but I just wanted to go over it with the ask that you allow us to take this to public meetings coming up. There's a couple of minor changes that we did based on feedback, so I'll mention those as I go through it. All right, first, what we're doing is basically we're asking for changes to three middle schools. We've got Louisville Middle School coming on board next year. It's going to be completed in July and to open up in August. We're going to do some rebranding around Philo Hill Magnet Academy to bring it back as a state of art arts magnet, offering the variety of art programming there. And then, with Haynes, as you all know, for years, we've been transporting those students across the county because of vacating the Haynes Building there. So, we are proposing to put those students back in their geographic area. So, those are the three changes. There's going to be some changes or at least freezing of some of our policies for one year, and I'll go through that. But basically, the main one is the board policy, which, you know, says that every middle school student shall have three schools to choose from in a zone. Because of some of these changes, we're going to be left with a couple of schools in one zone and one school without a zone for one year. The zoning that I mentioned, the rest of them are, I'll go over them quickly just for this purpose. So, the northeast and the northwest zone will be with two schools because Haynes is going to be dissolved. The residential area for Haynes is going to be dissolved to allow those students to attend school in their geographic area. And then, in the southeast, we're putting a boundary around the Haynes Building, the Haynes on the Hillside Building. So, the southeast will still have the three schools in the zone now, including Haynes, Southeast, and East Forsyth Middle School. And then, because of the spacing we're going to need for Philo Hill construction, we're putting the students at the Philo location at Winston-Salem Prep for that year. So, they'll be now part of the southwest green zone. So, the students will still have the same zoning as they did in that area. It's just a little bit difference in what school they'll be attending for next year. So, again, the southwest blue, Midwest zone, and East Zone will still have the same schools in it. So, Louisville is going to be completed in July, to be opened in August. The changes for Louisville will be that they won't be in a zone next year just so we make sure that we get the right amount of students with as much construction as is going on there. They'll be put in a zone for '22, '23. So, that's when we're going to put them back in a zone. So, for next year, all the students in grades six through eight will be assigned to Louisville in the proposed boundaries that I'll show you a little later during this presentation. But students in eighth grade especially can opt to stay and finish the middle school years at the schools where, you know, they're attending right now. Again, Philo Hill, it'll be completed in 2022. So, we got next year that we're going to do the construction there for that. So, the Philo Hill, the proposed assignment changes for those will be they'll be closed for next year. It'll open up as a brand-new school in the same location the Philo Hill is right now in the '22, '23 school year. It'll have residential students plus countywide magnet participation. So, basically, for next year, the students that are attending Philo Hill will be split up. Some going to Hill, Haynes on the Hillside, and some going to Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy for 2021, '22 school year, while they're doing construction at the Philo Hill location. But they'll still have the same zoning as I mentioned. And they can apply for those choices in their zone during the February 8th through the 26th. And that's one of the changes in dates that I mentioned. We'll go over that shortly when we go over the timelines. All right, and then, the Haynes Middle School. Basically, we're not making any changes to the STEM or the HAG program at Haynes. That's going to remain there. All we're doing is creating a residential boundary around the school location where we'll assign students sixth through eighth grade that are in that area right now for the '21, '22 school year. And the residential students from Haynes will be expected to attend, well, they'll be residential to Mineral Springs now. So, we're combining the Mineral Springs and Haynes boundaries in the north side of town. So, students that are attending Haynes that are currently residential will still have the option to reapply and stay there if they wanted to, especially if they're in eighth grade and they want to finish, you know, the year there. But basically, they'll have a new residential area around it. And their zoning again will still be, they'll still be able to choose southeast and east Forsyth as part of their zoning. All right, so the group that did this work for us, let me go back here real quickly. ORE, the Operations Research and Education Laboratory, is a group out of NC State. Unfortunately, they're not on the call today. I'm just going to go over their presentation since they were there last week and present it to you. So, basically, we utilize, these are folks that work basically around opening schools and redistricting. They've worked all across our state. And they are strictly data-driven work, you know, and they kind of take the politics out of redistricting. They have a variety of services that they do, and we use some of their services. For example, the forecast enrollment forecast, out of capacity analysis, and the land use studies, what we've used, what we worked with them before on. So, I'll just go directly to their work around redistricting. So, they use the set of priorities to propose these. So they used a set of priorities to propose these scenarios that you'll see that we're asking to take to public community meetings. And the four priorities that they used was maximizing students' proximity to school, balancing utilization, respecting neighborhoods and maintaining feeder patterns for schools. And they came up with some scenarios for us. So here they go around, just kind of explaining what optimization of the school scenario, school attendance zone scenarios are. Going to just go right to what they've proposed. So these are just our current residential boundaries with the high school boundaries on top of those. But all right, so the middle school areas that will be affected are because of Lewisville. Middle School is going to be Jefferson and Middle Ark. We're going to try to provide some relief in that area to those schools. And then obviously Haynes, because we're redistricting, and Philo Hill because of the construction and reopening, closing and reopening. They ran two scenarios for Louisville for us because they capture different of those priorities and the district goals that we had in there. This one right here is balances utilization. It maximizes student proximity to school and respecting neighborhoods. And as you can see, it affects part of Jefferson, part of Middle Ark in that new boundary that they're proposing. The yellow lines that you see going around it are the, you know, with the blue in there are the Lewisville new boundaries. And the green and the purple that you see are the areas from Jefferson and Middle Ark that will be redistricted. Option two is a little bit different because it creates that clean feeder pattern with elementary to middle school. It's just slight differences there. They put sort of the blue line of the elementary schools there for us. Just it captures the, some elementary schools directly into the new middle school there in Lewisville. All right, these are some of the scenarios as far as minority percentages. So by residential boundary, those are the percentages in that area of people that live there residentially. And then this is by percentage of students attending there. As you can see, some changes are happening there for especially Middle Ark and Jefferson a little bit. It's because of the choice program that we have. Of course, for Lewisville, you know, it's just all projected right now. All right, so we also talked about using demographic balancing as one of the priorities. We've sort of looked internally. Free and reduced lunch data is, we don't have that data per student anymore for a little while because not everybody's filling out those applications. Some of our schools are 100% free and reduced. And so basically, any data that we use has to be translated to the neighborhood. And so we need per-student data. And then we can possibly look at using some of the end-of-grade testing data if there's a, you know, to try to get some achievement gap there by student. But also because of the region, it would involve some satelliting of students to be able to balance it a little bit more there. And so boundaries would not be confused. All right. Haynes Middle School, basically the residential area that you see there is going to be, the bottom part is Haynes, the green part, and, I mean, the blue part. Well, actually, I'm saying it all in green. So basically, all of that area is now going to be Haynes. It's just going to be combined with Mineral Springs. It's important to note for me though, student assignment-wise, that we're keeping those in their same zones of choice. So the students in the Haynes, current Haynes area that are merging with Mineral Springs, we're going to keep that boundary. Those students will still have the option to use Northwest as their choice. That's their typical choice that they do in their zone. Mineral Springs students will still be able to choose to Walker Town Middle School. That's where they're typically choosing too. So we're going to keep those and give those students those same opportunities. All right, and these are some of the minority percentages that ran for us. As you can see, there's not a lot of changes with the changes in the student enrollment. All right, so in the Philo Hill side, basically, as I mentioned, we're just going to separate what used to be Philo and what used to be Hill. Basically, we're separating those out. The Hillside are going to go to Haynes now because they live around that Haynes Building. The Philo side, the green side that you see, those students are going to go to Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy. That's where we sort of have space right now to send those students. And then once Philo Hill is reconstructed and opened up as an arts magnet, we're going to try to make a smaller boundary, residential boundary around it to allow for countywide participation, you know, into the magnet program. So that's just the proposed in the blue, light blue that you see there. Once the programming comes together and we know what kind of space we can kind of merge all of that together, we'll represent those, that area to you. And again, one more time, they ran out of minority percentages for us. And basically, there's not a lot of changes there in those. All right. All right, now, so I'm going to go over just our timeline on the redistricting side. You know, we've sort of here where we're doing the board meetings. The next thing we're going to have are the community meetings if the board decides to let us have those. So we're going to have November 30th, December 1st, and December 2nd. We're going to have community meetings. For Lewisville, it'll be at Reagan High School. There'll be an in-person component of it and a virtual component of it. And then for Haynes, we're going to have that at North Forsyth Auditorium. At Philo Hill Middle School, we're going to have the Parkland High School just because, you know, we don't have students in those buildings yet. So that'd be a safe place for us to have community meetings. So from there, there was a change. Initially, we had said on December 8th, we were going to meet with the Choice Committee, our Board Attorney and ORE and Executive Cabinet took over the community feedback. We decided that was too early. It wasn't going to give folks enough time to do community feedback. So, you know, between the 2nd and the 8th, it was just going to be crunched and we want to make sure we hear from the community on those. So we talked internally and decided to move that date to review the community feedback to January 14th. Of course, it's a tentative date because the board hasn't finalized their calendar, but we just put it on there for you. And then after that, you know, we have plenty of time in case there's some, you know, adjustments or whatever comes out of the community meetings to kind of represent the final presentation to the board on January 26th with a call to action. So other things that we had in the works and will present to you would be during February to April would be some of those high school feeder pattern changes that, you know, we had seen before. And then, of course, we've got Lewisville Middle School completion date. That'll be in July and the following July in '22, Philo Hill Middle School will be constructed. I just wanted to add briefly also in there that, of course, we still have Smith Farm Middle School in the, you know, southeast part of, so we'll be working on that later on. And, you know, I didn't want to make sure our middle school, we're not done yet with it. We still have one more school, one more middle school coming onboard later on. All right, the format of the community meetings, again, we made a slight change based on some feedback that we got. So we're going to, having an early in-person meeting during the day at 10 o'clock. We talked and it's really not going to be, well, you know, people basically attended. So we're going to have it later in the evening. We're going to have a 6:00 one, just giving enough folks time to get off of work and be able to come there. But then we're moving the virtual in the morning in case folks are, you know, lunchtime, they can, if they have the opportunity, just log in, you know, and just tune in. So we're going to have that one at 12:00 PM, followed by a 6:00 PM one in person at those sites that I mentioned earlier. And then we're also going to record the presentation that we're going to post on our website with the feedback. So for anybody that can't make it to either of those, they'll be able to go see the presentation and submit their feedback directly on our websites. All right, and a little slight change because of those dates to our choice process timeline. It's not going to affect our high schools or elementary school or anything, but for middle school, we realized that really with the time crunch, it's going to be hard to get feedback, bring it to you, and then notify parents correctly of what's happening and where they're going to be assigned next year and what their options are. So we went ahead and separated middle school from the rest of the assignment periods. And we're going to do those. So we're starting with a choice and magnet period only for middle school, February 8th, and going all the way to February 26th. This way, we've got everything out of the way. Everybody's kind of communicated too, so they know when to participate and how to participate. But it doesn't change the rest of our grade span timelines. We're going to keep those intact. All right, so this is just the middle school redistricting staff plan. You saw these dates on there. I'm just going to, you know, just kind of show them to you. And if there are any questions, obviously, Ms. Bonner is here, so she can answer those for us. And that's about it. Any questions for me on this? And again, we're just asking for permission to be able to take this to community tonight. I really appreciate everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have the new course proposals by Dr. Sajada Latin, the Executive Director.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
Chair, we had a couple hands up from virtual.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I think Barbara and Andy and myself all have our hand up. Could you go with Barbara first, please?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Board Member Mott Singer. I have a couple of concerns and then I have a few questions. Some of my concerns, as I mentioned in our committee meeting last week, I'm concerned that we are closing Philo Hill during the construction period. And this is not a process that we have had take place in the past. In the past, when we have schools built on-site, we normally keep the building open and keep the students and teachers right there and continue on with their education as the new schools are constructed, as we did with Conoc, which is right next door to Hill Philo, and as we did most recently with Paisley being built. And I'm just wondering, again, why would we create a hardship for our students and for our parents that follow and split them up in different directions to three different school locations? Another concern that I have, I'm highly concerned that with equity being one of the goals for the school district, the residential boundaries that have been shared cause extremely high minority populations in the schools or extremely low minority populations. And I just don't see how that fits with our goal of equity. And here are some questions that I have. With Philo Hill being closed for two years, how much of a savings will the school district see as a result of this school being closed for two years? And what, what is the plan as far as what we will do with this additional money? Also, how many middle schools do we have now that are currently arts magnet middle schools? And is it possible to explore the idea of Philo Hill being a vocational school? And is it possible to explore this idea using data and to determine the impact of both a vocational magnet program versus an arts magnet program? Those are my questions and I'd be glad to repeat them. Those are my concerns.
Ms. Burke, this is Colin Moore. I'll address the construction question. You are absolutely correct. We, majority of our projects, we do do the construction while the, while the students are on site. We analyzed that possibility here and came up with a, our schedule was developed with the kids staying on campus. The addition will be going on behind the gymnasium. So the kids will be able to occupy the classroom wings during construction. The concern came when we did the renovation in the existing admin building. The renovation will be done with people occupying that building, including the shifting of the cafeteria and the media center. With the closing of the school, and I wanted to correct you, it's only going to be closed for one school year, not two school years. So during the closing, that one school year, the construction would complete in the summer of 2022. If we don't, if we don't close it, then we're going to open, the school would be completed in the, in February of '23. So the concern from staff, and we discussed this a little bit further with Executive Cabinet, the concern with staff is reopening a new school in the middle of a school year. And then at the end of that school year, if we do the redistricting then, you would basically have students that were in a new school and you would be shifting them because you're changing their locations. So that was, that was kind of the reason is looking at doing that is to not, not to change what the students were going to have happen by reopening a school, if you will, in the middle of a school year. So I hope that answers your question. And I did, again, want to clarify that it is for one school year. So I'm going to back up and allow someone else to answer the magnet question.
Thank you, Colin. That does answer the question regarding the timeline. Who can answer the question regarding the savings that we will incur?
Again, this is Colin again. I think your question was more of an operational savings. Am I remembering that correctly more than a construction cost savings? Is that, we're not, we're not really looking at it from the construction cost savings. There will be some with the construction savings, no doubt, because we're doing it six months faster. But I think your question was related to operational expense. Am I correct?
That's correct, Cole. But you can tell me also the additional savings because of the speedy turnaround. Thank you.
Honestly, Ms. Burke, I'm not prepared to answer that tonight. We don't, we haven't explored that number yet. I would say as an order of magnitude, we're probably talking $500,000 to $600,000 in construction cost savings that, of course, we would apply to the, to the construction cost. But for the construction piece of it, you're probably looking $500,000 or $600,000 just based on finishing a project six months earlier.
Thank you, Colin. Do we have any staff member who could answer any of the other questions?
Can you repeat them, Board Member Burke?
Yes, I'll be glad to. Like, I see Homa is up now, so Homa, maybe you can tell us about, I guess you wanted to answer the questions about the residential boundaries?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to answer that one. I want to tell you, we can probably, I don't know if there's any staff that can give you the operational savings, but we can definitely get that answer for you for sure. Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind repeating your question about the boundaries, I'll be glad to answer that one for you.
The question was, with the residential boundaries that have been set forth, we will end up with schools that are extremely highly populated with minorities or extremely low, there will be an extremely low population of minorities. And I'm just wondering, why were we not able to have more of a balance given the fact that equity is one of the goals of this district?
Yes, ma'am. So a couple of things. On the Lewisville side, what we did was, again, legally, we can't use demographics as a factor alone by itself to redistrict. So we have to have a secondary factor for it. We looked into using economic status such as free and reduced lunch. And unfortunately, we don't have that data per student anymore. So the only thing we can really use are test scores that we may have. But that is going to be a lengthier process to explore that. Our folks that are doing our work, when they ran some models that we can't really present, obviously because of the legalities, where they just wanted to warn that there are going to be some satelliting because of the geographic area to get additional diversity in it. We would have to pick students from other areas that are not close and place them residentially to Lewisville, which would create, again, a longer distance for those students, a minority, to travel to go to that school.
I'm sorry, Homa. I know that you're doing the best that you can, but the audio is just not good for me. And I'm not going to ask you to repeat that, but it wasn't clear. And so I will, can anyone answer the question about the additional savings and the plan or the plans that we have regarding the additional savings?
Board Member Burke, we're going to actually, I think-
Board Member Burke, we're going to actually, I think what we said is we were not 100% sure of the operational savings, but we will send that to you all tomorrow through an email.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McManus. And I also had one additional question, and it pertained to, Holman, you can answer this one. How many arts magnet schools do we have on the middle school level currently?
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we have one. It's Merrill Springs Middle School is our arts magnet in a middle school.
Okay. And I know that you have, and staff members have met with community members from the Pharaoh Hill family. And I wonder if, when you meet, if you can, or if we can survey them regarding a vocational school versus an arts magnet school? And if we can present to them data and the impact of having vocational versus magnet or magnet versus vocational, so that they can make informed decisions as to what kind of program would be best for their students?
Yes, ma'am. I can certainly, because if we take especially the community, we're gonna be meeting with those folks, and there's gonna be a community feedback coming from that, so we can certainly look into, you know, providing that extra data to them and their recommendations, for sure.
Thank you so much, Holman.
Thank you.
Ms. Bremer?
Hi, yes. I just wanted to clarify that there's also a choice survey out there that people need to fill out that may change this. This is not necessarily written in concrete. We need to actually have people to come out with their opinions. Their opinions are important. So they should be coming to the community events. They should virtually or show up in person. But they definitely need to speak up because this is an important issue, and it will be our future. So don't wait. Do it now.
Board Member Mott Singer?
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. I just, I wanted to reinforce, actually, what Ms. Burke said earlier about recreating the same boundaries that caused so much concern currently in our district and trying to make sure that every decision we make does have equity in mind and that we're really thinking about that deliberately and realizing that that will indeed, to make changes, will create things that feel awkward and unnatural. And that's what shifts feel like. So I just would like us, I'd like to stress that I think that's important nonetheless. I actually love the idea of an arts magnet as long as we're doing really good partnerships, such as University of North Carolina School of the Arts, which is unique in the state of North Carolina and in most state university systems, as well as groups like Authoring Action, which have done such good work with helping young people really find their voices. My biggest concern is that we not have, quote, "a magnet school" that isn't attracting magnet students. So I want to make sure that if we're doing that, we're doing everything possible to make sure it's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our last discussion item is the Safe Return Update and Stage Reentry Plan. Oh, sorry. Let me back up to Discussion Item F, which is the New Course Proposals by Dr. Sajada Latton, the Executive Director for Teaching and Learning.
Good evening, School Board Members. Chair Woodbury and Ms. McManus. During last week's Curriculum Committee Meeting, I presented the 2021-22 New Course Proposals. I guided us through an overview of about 10 course requests. Those included Advertising and Design, Drone Technology 1 and 2, Exploring Family and Consumer Science 3, IB History High Level, IB History Standard Level, AP Art and Design, Economics and Personal Finance, Civic Literacy, and Organic and Biochemistry. Two questions arose that I would like to answer in this setting. The first of those questions was clarifying the title of Organic and Biochemistry. We looked up the actual course in the North Carolina Board of Education's platform, and the Organic and Biochemistry course proposed is actually outlined as Organic and Biochemistry. That course code is 3C3X0 with the short code being CHM132. So due to the title outlined by the state, we cannot alter that title. The second question came as clarifying what topics would be covered in Economics and Personal Finance. And the topics included in that course are more geared towards personal finance. The specific topics outlined are economics, income and education, money, credit management, financial planning, and lastly, critical consumerism. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Our last discussion item, again, is the Safe Return Update and Stage Reentry Plan by Mrs. McManus, our interim superintendent.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Board Members. So thank you for allowing us this time to give an update on what's been happening with our return to school to in-person learning so far. This will hopefully give you a comprehensive look into what has been happening. And so, just to get started, I do want to say thank you first, before we get started, to all of our teachers, all of our students, all of the bus drivers. I know we had some of you come out this evening. Everyone, cafeteria, our cafeteria workers, our teachers assistants, every person, our principals and assistant principals, every person that is touching our schools right now, and all of the district leaders that have provided support and leadership and been out in schools. We've been in schools every Monday that they've opened and beyond that. We've been visiting our schools. And I want to say that what our folks have been doing is impressive. And not only are people being very deliberate in how they're handling our mitigation strategies, but kids, the faces of our students are priceless. And it's been so amazing to get to see the students that are actually in our buildings right now. So with this update, this is who we've had back with us so far. November 2nd, as you know, this, the first group came back of pre-K, EC, separate setting, EC assigned, OCS, ESL Academy and CTE. As we, on November 9th, kindergarten returned. And then just yesterday, first grade returned. So that's who has been in our buildings so far. These are the numbers of students that have returned. And so we, we're trying to give you a picture of how many are actually enrolled and then how many have actually been in person in their classrooms. And so you can see those numbers. Based on our pre-K and first, based on enrollment, that they're pretty high numbers that have actually been in attendance. Here in all of our schools, you know, you've heard from some of our teachers that we do have adult screening. And I know, I think some of our board members actually have been in schools helping with screening, and a lot of district leaders have been out helping with some of the screening just to see what that process is looking like. And basically, I put these, these numbers in here just to get a feel for the fact that 10 students at this point that have gotten to school have actually been sent away for screening. Most have, if they have either had symptoms or been exposed, have actually quarantined. And you can see that on our dashboard. Our quarantine numbers are growing because a lot of folks that are being exposed anywhere are calling and they're quarantining. So that's the first number. The second number is about 15 students, because I know when we started talking about the holding spaces, there was a great deal of fear as to, oh, my gosh, are they going to be just overflowing with students? And how are we going to manage that? But our principals reported to us that at this point across all of our elementary schools that have been open, or all of our schools that have been open, it's about 15 students that potentially develop symptoms along the way or any kind of symptom that the teacher said, let's send them to the holding space, or somebody said, let's send them to the holding space. I'm gonna bring up Jennifer Corso, and as she's coming up, I did want to also highlight, as we've been out in schools for the last three Mondays, we've had meetings on those same days with all of the district leaders that had visited schools. And what we did is we talked about what was going well and what were areas of concern, so we could address those immediately. So I'll tell you that some of what was going well were the procedures, the planning, all the planning that we have been doing over the last, well, since school started, actually, we're seeing it in action. Was at Abraham yesterday, great job to Angie Choplin and her teachers. You know, students were standing on their markers, social distance. Students were washing their hands. They were, they were separated out in the classrooms. And that's what we're seeing happening across the schools that are currently open. People are working hard to follow the mitigation strategies from what we're seeing. So thank you to our staffs for doing that and for being so committed to our students. Some of the areas that were concerning, of course, we found out about the thermometers not working well on day one. And we immediately turned around and did a training on that immediately on how to have those working better. Other things like the attestation forms and, you know, we're worried about those not being collected. And some of our bus drivers, we met with them, and they had concerns. And so we tried to get them, I believe we got them, the equipment that they were asking for as far as thermometers. And Lauren can talk more to that when she comes up. Adding teacher, other assistants on the bus. So I'm saying all that to say, the minute we hear that there might not be something that went exactly as planned, there's a team that figures out how to fix it. And I wish we could figure out how to fix the virus, but that's, yeah, unfortunately, no. So we are, though, able to, to work as a team to try to make those changes. So with that, I'm gonna bring Jennifer up, who is going to talk to you some, about some of the health updates.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, members of the board. Ms. McManus, thank you for having me speak to you this evening. The first topic that I wanted to address is our nurse extenders. We touched on this the last time that we presented. These are the agency nurses that we were able to secure through an agency. There are 20 of them. This slide gives you an update of how we're utilizing their nursing talents in the district. 17 of them are in schools, and three are helping us with contact tracing. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback from our principals, so that's been good to know that they are actually making a really, a positive impact in our schools and with our staff. And we also wanted to point out, as Ms. McManus said, the scheduling with them, we are looking to solidify that. I have gotten feedback from principals, just looking for more consistency in days and nurses, and so I acknowledge that. And we are working to correct that and just get a more solid team with the agency. They're also working in remote learning centers on Wednesday, so we're utilizing them on the days that the schools are closed. They've actually had a wonderful experience in some of the imprint centers, the local community centers, and they're calling it Nurse Wednesday. So I think that's kind of fun. And I think that, again, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback, and I think they're looking forward to having a nurse come visit their remote learning center. Another way that we're looking to utilize the nurse extenders is with an assessment center. We recognize that with schools closed, not all students, pardon me, are able to get their vision hearings done. So we have worked with Prevent Blindness North Carolina, the school audiologist, and we're gonna actually be training those nurses to work in this assessment center and offer that to our students. So that's just an update about our nurse extenders. Contact tracers, another update here. You will see as far as the district staff. We currently, pardon me, have offered three training sessions to all staff. Devlin Bonner Reed assisted that went out with me, and I think we got a lot of wonderful feedback. Again, some of it was areas of improvement, which we noted, and we're working to take all those into consideration. And as we pointed out to our staff in those sessions, we welcome that. It's good for us to know what's working, what's not working, and as we can pivot to, to make our strategies even better. This week, we'll be conducting sessions with our bus drivers. Again, to Ms. McManus's point, recognizing that they have unique concerns that we definitely want to recognize. And then with our COVID coordinators next week, we'll be offering additional training. I'm sorry, this mask is a little tight. Pardon me. With our contact tracing team, again, pointing out that we have three nurse extenders that are part of that team and looking to, we have actually brought on a person specifically to manage the data, which is phenomenal and has worked really well. We actually have continued to have support from our HR staff. And then we'll continue to make adjustments as we need to. And we are actually finalizing positions this week for two staff that we'll be bringing on. So we're looking to have a team of about six staff dedicated to contact tracing, with the majority of them being registered nurses, which we think is just a definite added bonus in the entire process and a benefit to families and staff. As far as our process updates, we're looking to just continue to refine our processes across the board. One thing we did implement since we last came before you was a reporting form. The principals, COVID coordinator, whomever at the staff actually reports by a form now, pardon me, instead of having to call that in or via email. It creates consistency and workflow for our contact tracers. It also gives us a point of accountability that we can go back and refer to. Another thing that we have implemented since we came before you was meeting with our principals and giving them updates along the way. We have, again, refined the process with them, given them a tool that they can utilize, so that letters and tools are very accessible to them. And so we feel like that's definitely a move in a positive direction. Our contact tracing review. The dashboard went live November 2nd. It's updated every day, Monday through Friday. Let me specify that, by 5:00 p.m. One thing that we have noticed as we look back through our couple of weeks that we have of data, with the pre-K, K and EC students, the reported cases that we have at these age levels are from home, more, pardon me, home-related or community exposure. So we have not seen student to student, student to teacher. And that's exposure leading to a confirmed case. Let me specify that. Close contacts are quickly identified and are quarantined. And with our high school students, I would say as far as when we look at the data, most of those students are probably are related more to athletics. Or when we look at the connections between students, it's social, right? I mean, these are teenagers. And even in a time of a pandemic, they're social creatures. And again, whenever we were able to point out these close contacts, we quarantined them as quickly as possible. So that's an update for that process. And then as far as continuing on with our contact tracing review is our partnership with Forsyth County Department of Public Health. We have a daily reporting form that we share with them. We also call in all reported confirmed cases to them. They actually have added an entire team with the Health Department just specifically to our district, which I think is a wonderful testament to our partnership with them, and we definitely appreciate their efforts in that respect. And then the contact tracing team of public health, we will continue to partner. We look at trends. We do look at trends in a school, trends in a grade level, trends in an area of town, because we obviously know that they have data that is specific to zip codes and whatnot. So we definitely partner with them in that way as well, just to compare our data and see if there's any trends that we need to be mindful of or vice versa. Is there any questions?
I don't have a, well, I guess there's some degree of question. I'm wondering, could you sort of give us a concise version of what does contact tracing looks like real time in a school setting?
I'd be glad to. Thank you. So first of all, I want to recognize that our contact tracing process is internal. We're not contact tracing for Forsyth County. That's the role of public health. So it is something unique. To our knowledge, we're the only district that has something like this in place. So we feel very fortunate that the board has been supportive of this, and also leadership, and also public health. But it is an internal contact tracing process. So it starts with a confirmed case. So when we look at the confirmed case, we look at, obviously, have they touched or affected a school campus, when they were last on that campus, who were they around? We use the definition of a close contact, going back to 48 hours, and applying that. Close contacts are then notified specifically by the principal. They get a separate letter. But also, families and staff are now notified of any confirmed case on campus. And I will specify on the dashboard, the numbers that you see there are staff or students that affected a campus. Remote learners or whatnot are still reported to us, but because they were not on a campus, athletics or whatnot, their numbers are reported to public health, but they're not on the dashboard. So I'd like to clarify that point as well. And then as far as the contact tracing, again, when we look at the mass data, which we can tell trends and whatnot on a spreadsheet, again, that partnership with public health, we kind of let them know ahead of time, schools, grade level, class, et cetera, that we are concerned about. So we're kind of working ahead with public health to hand them off our information, and then obviously they conduct a formal contact tracing process.
I think we have questions from board members virtually. We'll start with Board Member Mott Singer.
Thank you so much, Chair Woodbury. I wanted to know exactly what is a nurse extender? And what kind of training does a nurse extender have?
Thank you, Chair Mott Singer. The nurse extenders are registered nurses or LPNs. They are agency nurses, so they're not our direct employees. They're on a contract with us. So if the contact tracers had to go through the same training that our public health nurses and our CFST nurses that already work in the district had to complete, they did, pardon me, they did complete a course through Don Hopkins for contact tracing. They had to undergo PPE training and then also strong schools training as well.
So are the 17 nurses, are they RNs or LPNs then?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Chair Mott Singer. They're, pardon me, Board Member Mott Singer, they're both.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
I'm sorry, the nurse extenders are registered nurses and licensed practical nurses.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand, from my, what I understand is we hired 17 more nurses. Is that correct?
These nurses do not overlap school nurses. School nurses still have their specific role. This is in addition to that nurse support that the school nurses provide. The nurse extenders are there for COVID-related support and wellness. So they really are-
Right, so they're LPNs? I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm being all concrete and I'm far away, and I'm just trying to understand, are these nurse extenders LPNs then?
They are LPNs and registered nurses. It's a combination.
Okay, so of the, and then, but there is not enough to have a LPN, for example, in every school. So what is the training for the people who are supposed to be in the schools during the day addressing symptomatic students?
So thank you for your question. Again, the nurse extenders, as far as their training, they have the same training that the public health nurses and the CFST nurses had. The majority of that is part of the strong schools toolkit that was offered by DHHS regarding protocols and PPE. And then they also completed, and then will complete their training this coming Monday, the 23rd, regarding the Don Hopkins contact tracing course.
So thank you so much, I'm still a little confused. My understa-, we had school nurses before COVID. We had not nearly enough school nurses, but we had some school nurses, right?
Yes, ma'am.
We had school nurses. And then we've hired 17 more nurses, and my understanding is that they are both, some are RNs and some are LPNs.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's, right? And so, so they're all licensed?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, if you're an LPN, you're licensed?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, but my quest, and so my, you know, and for me, just as a medically trained person, it'd actually be easier to hear RNs and LPNs, because I don't know what a nurse extender is by definition, but I do know what an LPN is. That's a licensed person, they all have to be licensed, is what I'm hearing. Of these 17 extra employees that have been hired since COVID, is that correct?
So, thank you, Board Member Mott Singer. There's actually 20 nurses that we have hired, 17 are in schools, and three are actually part of the contact tracing team. And the reason we chose nurse extenders is just because the nurses do vary in credentials, to your point, some are LPNs, some are registered nurses. And while you and I understand that licensure and level of scope, school staff, we didn't want to confuse it, so we just gave them a uniform title of nurse extenders, just like our school nurses, sometimes they vary in credentials, maybe they're an ADN, diploma grad or BSN. So school nurses and nurse extenders, we just were trying to have a uniform title across for all schools.
Okay. And then my other question is, but even with these 17 more school nurses, we don't have enough school nurses to have a nurse in every building while school's in session? So we have other people who are responsible for taking care of symptomatic students. Am I correct?
So the nurse extenders do not have the same role as a school nurse. They will not tend to chronic health conditions, care plans and whatnot. Their focus is strictly wellness and COVID. So the two actually have separate roles. They'll often partner together if need be, but they do have distinctive roles.
So I'm trying to figure out, there's a person in every school who's there while every school is in session, who's responsible for attending to students who develop symptoms during the day. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll make sure I'm speaking to the mic a little bit more clearly so you can hear me. Every school has a COVID coordinator that is school staff. So every school, even if it's a day that a nurse extender or a school nurse is not on campus, every school does have a COVID coordinator.
And what kind of training do the COVID coordinators have?
Again, the training that I did with them was specific to their role. It did utilize the guidance of the strong schools toolkit to go over holding space, their unique role in our district, screening processes. They also had to be trained by the school nurse. There's a delegated task in the school, only the school nurse can actually do that with the COVID coordinators, and then any additional staff that will be working in the holding space.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Board Member Bremer.
Yes, so I'm hearing that we're contact tracing on an individual school level, which will end up with closing individual school levels for deep cleaning, correct?
We are-
At some point?
We are, we are contact tracing on a school level, to your point, even down to classrooms, if need be.
Okay, but we don't have a holistic system where we can actually say, if this percentage of the population has it or is spreading it. We don't have a metric in place that we can deal with the entire district, for all students, every student, we're only dealing with classroom by classroom, is that correct?
Thank you for that question, Board Member Bremer. The guidance is for us to consult with public health. So as we see a trend, as I spoke to in a particular classroom, we don't wait till it gets to a certain number, to be very honest with you. When we realize that there is a multiple contacts, a confirmed case in a classroom, the guidance is for us to consult with public health, and that's what we've done recently. As most recent is this week, as needed. So unfortunately, there's not a metric, a specific number, that's given to us by public health or by DHHS. It is on a case-by-case basis, recognizing that every school, every situation may be different, close contacts, last date of exposure, there's lots of variables. So we do consult with public health.
You'll have to bear with me for just a second also, because we are, it's a technology, I think we reached our maximum bandwidth, and it is a little bit shaky right now, so it's hard to hear you sometimes, you're breaking up a lot. But it's my understanding, there's not a mandate from the Health Department, there's not a mandate from the State Department, there's not a mandate from the CDC. However, there is a guideline that's been issued at all three levels that are pretty much standard that we're supposed to take into consideration, which we have refused to take into consideration. And I want to make sure we're not recommending currently, right now, to even use those guidelines, because we should be.
I'm sorry, Board Member Bremer, I may have missed your question, I'm sorry. Was there a question?
Okay, there are, there are guidelines that are set from the CDC, from the state level, and at the Forsyth County Department of Public Health, that have a number associated with them. But they're guidelines, they're not mandates. But we are supposed to consider them in our plan, and yet we have no metric whatsoever in our plan. So I'm just asking, are you saying that you're not proposing right now a metric that we can use, even though guidelines were issued by the CDC, the State Health Service, and the Forsyth County Department of Health?
So, Board Member Bremer, thank you for your question. Again, the guidance is for us to consult with public health, and so I don't have a metric to give you, there's, I don't, that's not part of the guidance that I have or my role. And again, public health is our partner in this. And so as we reach out to them, they give us that guidance and they give us next steps. So that's how we-
Right, and it's my understanding, they did give guidance that we're in the highest risk and we should not be publicly gathering. And the governor has stated that we should not have more than 10 students or 10, any people together at one time anywhere, and yet we do have more than 10. So we aren't actually following any guideline that's been issued to us or any recommendation.
So, Board Member Bremer, I will say, we are going to present the metrics a little later in our presentation, that isn't included in these slides at this time, so we will be sharing those. I will say, the executive order by the governor did not include schools.
But does it make common sense that we should actually consider it with schools when they're considering it with every other population?
That's beyond my scope of practice, that was the decision by the governor.
That's my only concern, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Bremer. Board Member Burke?
Yes, I have two questions, but I'm going to start out with a statement first. According to the CDC's website, they acknowledge that teachers and students are in close contact for much of the day, and that schools can become a place where respiratory diseases like COVID can quickly spread. Just a minute. My first question is, when a staff member reports symptoms of COVID or when they report that they've been in close contact with someone who has tested positive for COVID, are we asking the staff members to stay at home? Or are we asking them to return to work until they have test results?
Thank you for your question, Board Member Burke. No, ma'am, if anyone reports any of those things, that they're a case, if they're a close contact, if they're symptomatic, or to be quite honest, if they're unsure if they have been exposed, the guidance that I have said is exclude, that's for staff or students, until we can get clarity and investigate more. Sometimes it is very straightforward, obviously, if you're a case, you've had a positive test result, it would not come. Sometimes they're having questions about exposure and dates. So again, we said, exclude yourself, exclude the student, the staff, until we can investigate. And again, with symptoms as well. So there is specific guidance in the strong schools toolkit to each of those, I guess, related areas that someone could be excluded, and so that is what we follow. There's also a screening tool that children would have to pass, and again, staff as well, that if they had been exposed or symptoms, they would have to address that at the time of screening.
Okay, and an additional question. When any individual in a classroom tests positive, are parents notified? Parents who have students in that particular classroom, are they notified?
So, thank you again for your question. So when we have a confirmed case at a school and that's for a student or staff, there is a broad notification that goes out to the entire school and families. And then for the close contacts, they receive an additional notification.
Okay. And I have one additional question for Jevlyn Bonner-Reed, our HR Director. Ms. Reed, I believe you're on the Zoom meeting call, is that correct?
Yes, could you give her a second? She's actually in person.
I'm in person, Board Member Burke, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. I would like to know, how many of our educators have resigned, retired, or taken long-term leave since August 1, 2020?
I can tell you how many, it's actually part of the presentation I'm about to do. So maybe I should just go into my presentation?
I think Board Member Parker has a question related to Ms. Corso, the health update. So, Ms. Burke, we will get to your question, if you can be patient with Ms. Jevlyn Reed, after Board Member Parker asks a question regarding the health update.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So as a part, I think, of your presentation, you said that we would be doing assessments, vision and hearing assessments. And is that only at remote learning centers that they will be going to do those?
No, ma'am, Board Member Parker. The vision screenings, when students have returned to schools, that is also offered. But the assessment centers that'll open the first week of December, that is for students who are remote or choose to get their assessment done there. My role in that, to be very honest with you, is to train the nurses, so that they're actually getting that training next week, so they'll be ready to go and assist in that effort.
Okay, so both our remote learners and our in-person learners will both have the opportunity or will be assessed, correct?
Yes, ma'am, both. The school nurses will kind of lead that effort in their role in the schools, as they've done for many years. And the nurse extenders, again, we just see them as an extension of our school nurses and our nurse services in the county. They'll be offering that at the assessment center, just as, you know, an option for families if they can't get to a school or a school may not be open, that they can get those services offered there.
Okay, great. I think that's important, especially for our young children, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Corso, quick question. The reason why the nurse extenders can only take care of COVID issues, is that because of the restriction of COVID dollars of how they're being paid?
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. I don't know that I can speak exactly to the funding, but that's my intent. I think that is my understanding, is their funding is unique to their role. And also, they have not undergone the training of school nurses, so that's another reason we want to make sure that there's very clearly defined roles. And so really, they support the school nurses to address more of the COVID-related. But again, they'll partner with them if there's ever a need arise that they need to do so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes ma'am.
So, good evening, board members, board chair Woodbury and-
Good evening.
Miss Sikkmanis, I'm gonna get started. I hope you can hear me okay through this mask. So, I want to talk about some of the staffing considerations that we've been working through as we support the schools, support the district, and delivering our education. So, I'm gonna talk to you a bit about school-based vacancies, retirement and resignation trends, um, that board member Burke just asked about. Uh, what we're seeing in terms of quarantines, uh, substitutes, as well as bus assistance. I want to note some other considerations that we have, but I'm not gonna get into as much detail about. Our, um, of course, bus drivers, staff, um, that are on Family Medical Leave Act or FMLA. Uh, we're, we're seeing trends of that getting higher. And ADA accommodations that we've been working through, that I'm not gonna get as much detail on that, because I would like to get some numbers as of tomorrow on that. So, we are monitoring all of this information as we consider the support that's needed within the schools. So, when it comes to vacancies, this is how we compare from last year this time versus this year. And we do have higher vacancies in teachers. We do not in our certified non-classroom, and then also higher within our classified. The higher we attribute vacancies within our teachers, we're attributing some of that to the virtual academy program and the lower class size for K3 and the necessity to, to fill those roles. And also some of our harder to fill roles such as EC, math and science. And then the higher vacancies we see in classified, um, for many of those, they're TAs and they're ECTAs that are actually covered by CPI. And, um, they're still showing up on our vacancy because they're covered by our, the agency that works with our temporary staff. So, it is a challenging, as you can imagine, recruitment environment. However, we've been continuing to push, and I'll talk a little bit towards the end about some of the recruitment activities that we're doing to address these vacancies. When we looked at the data this time last year, um, for retirements and resignations, we actually saw that we had more retirements and resignations last year versus this year. And then we actually had about the same certified, I'm sorry, for, for retirements, it was about the same. And for resignations and terminations, we actually had more last year. So, um, wanted to share that data with you as well. And then the wild card, admittedly in all of this, are the quarantines. So, due to the positive cases and close contacts, they've increased over time. Um, and one of the main things is the challenges around maintaining social distance. So, in many of these cases, these teachers are, are well enough to continue working from home and were able to find creative solutions for supporting the kids that are actually coming into the classroom, either through TAs, long-term subs, and other creative ways so that they're with as much as possible adults that they're used to, either through remote learning or through in-person, in-person learning that they're familiar with. So I want to say kudos to our principals and to our administrative staff and even to teachers that have allowed this to happen and for us to have some good coverage. And that leads to talking about substitute teachers. We actually have 957 in our substitute teacher roster. We trained 272 of them, starting in July. Uh, became trained in Canvas so that they would be available for this remote learning. We have 86 right now, active long-term subs to help us fill with the vacancies. And the definition of a long-term sub is, we actually changed that definition to support the schools better, that it's anybody for more than five days that are needed in the schools. It used to be 11 days. So, we have a 92% fill rate over the last couple of weeks, once we started bringing students back. It was actually 95 before that. And again, I have to point to the creative coverage and the hard work that our principals are doing. And then the hard work that the sub office is doing, recruiting and training subs. And also the hard work of the pre-K, K1 teacher assistants filling some of these gaps. Since the beginning of the school year, we've averaged about 44 sub requests per day. And it has actually increased to about 54 sub requests over the last two weeks. So we're paying really close attention to that.
How, how does that compare to normal? I don't know if that's high or low.
It's actually lower.
Okay.
I went all the way back to January, it's a lot lower, I was really surprised by that. Um, it is lower. But I, I also think it's, again, the principals being creative. In many cases, the teachers still being able to teach remotely, even when they're on quarantine. That's what I attribute a lot that, of that too. So, in terms of filling these sub roles, it is challenging and some of the reasons are really valid reasons, and we understand. Some substitutes, you saw we had 900, about 700 of them were like, this remote learning, that's not for me. And they haven't, um, signed up for the Canvas training, but we're still working with them. And many are, are high-risk. I think we do an amazing job of asking our, our retirees to come back and sub. And they've been there for us, and we understand this is a challenging time for them to be, um, subbing right now. Some have school-aged children, so they're at home, they're doing remote learning with their children, or they don't have the coverage. So again, we understand all that and we can't necessarily control that. But the fourth one, that's what we're looking at. We're looking at substitutes that have expressed to us that if maybe it was guaranteed and more long-term than a week or two, that they would come back. So, we're gonna start, we're analyzing that data before we, we bring back a lot of, um, the students. Analyzing it, working with finance to determine, can we have some floaters that are long-term that know they're gonna get this long-term work? You know, maybe tie them to a certain area with area superintendent. But we just have to flush all of that out in order to sup, support the schools better. So we're, we're looking for some creative solutions there and, um, using, utilizing data to make those decisions. So, when it comes to bus assistance, it was a challenge for some of the same reasons. And I think we underestimated that challenge, admittedly. Um, so, when we saw that that challenge was there, we collaborated with three staffing agencies. Usually we only work with one. But we got multiple staffing agencies working on this to find these candidates. And, um, admittedly, the first day, the November 2nd, when we started bringing students back, we had 12. And there was like, we couldn't believe it. But by today, and I actually have an update on this number, we have 121. So, we have worked really hard with these agencies, um, their support and our own work in order to get that number up. It's not where we want it to be yet, but we're, it's trending in the right direction after being open, what, seven or eight days of, um, actual instruction days. So, the recruitment events that we're doing include, we had a drive-through career fair on October 30th that was planned for a while, and that actually yielded some, we worked with those agencies and they, um, we were able to refer some people to those agencies and then come, um, work with us. We had a Forsyth Tech event today. And then we have a substitute teacher open house that we're holding tomorrow. And, um, there's a lot of teacher recruitment. The main teacher recruitment I want to highlight though, is that we have a virtual winter teacher career fair on December 5th. So, that's the work that we're doing in order to support from a staffing perspective for the schools, for central office and for operations. Are there any questions? Yes?
I have a question. Um, you mentioned about teachers who might not be able to come into the building because they're symptomatic. Um, but then they've been able to teach their class remotely. Um, do they have to take a sick day if they don't come in? We've received some emails as board members talking about teachers who've said, you know, they want to be on, err on the side of caution and not come in and, um, you know, and possibly spread something to their colleagues. So they've taught from home, but they said they had to take a sick day for that. I just want to make sure they're not being penalized for being cautious with that.
So, what they should do is they report, you know, the symptoms, they report the exposure, they report the positive case. If they're well enough to work, they shouldn't be working even if they're home if they're sick. But if they're well enough to continue working, no, they're not taking a sick day. And they're teaching and they're actually working. Um, I would like to hear more about that, about the, the individuals and understand what's happening there. But no, if they're well enough, um, and they fall into any of those categories, it's not a sick day, so.
Um, yes, uh, the 92% coverage from a few slides ago, is that 92% only because of the subs? Or is it because the principals have found better ways to cover the vacancies?
I think it's a bit of both, to be honest. Um, in a lot of cases, it's their TA subbing up. So they get paid a little bit more and, and they're able to find those subs. But they still work through us when it's, um, when they're subbing up, and that would show up in that 92%. But I think some are not even asking for a sub because they found some better ways within their school to manage. So, again, the, the principals are working really hard, either through that means or through working through us to sub up their TAs.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, this is board member Burke. I have a couple of questions, and I'm gonna start with, uh, the sub data.
Yes.
The first question, is the sub data down because a sub can't be called until a teacher misses five days?
Well, if, for instance, if they have a vacancy, they're, no, they're not gonna fill it right, be able to fill it in time. We don't wait till five days. We say, let's get the vacancy, we know they're gonna be there longer than five days. We also, when it was before, um, November 2nd, we did tell the principals that they could not have short-term subs. Once the students started returning to the classroom, we, we stopped that. They, we said you could have a day-by-day sub, you can request those. But we did put a pause on that until students came back. So since November 2nd, just to be clear, since November 2nd, they can ask for day-to-day subs and they can ask for long-term subs.
Okay, and do we have this policy in writing anywhere?
The policy in writing anywhere, are, it's in, it's more of an action that we've taken. Do you want to go ahead, Dionne?
Ms. Burke, are you referring to, um, which, which policy are you referencing and whether or not it's in writing?
Well, I did ask the questions if the number of subs are down. If the data is showing that that number is down because we are waiting five days. And Ms. Fana Reid explained that that is not the case. And she explained how we are handling subs. So I'm asking, do we have that, uh, statement that she just made in writing anywhere so that it is followed and practiced by all throughout the district in an equitable way?
Yes, so, for both cases, before we kicked off school, we had sessions with the principals and we gave them tips on how to, to do the subs when we were in, in, um, remote learning. And then when it came time to come back, ahead of coming back, so that they could prepare and plan, we had the same sessions, but we, we indicated you could get a day-to-day sub. And, um, so we did work through so it could be equitable and shared it across the entire system. And, um, that's, that's the operations that we've been doing.
Okay, so I have another statement because I'm just wondering if our sub data is, is down uh, because we're only showing one level, uh, of school open at the current time. You don't have to answer that, but that might be a reason that the numbers are also down. Also, before your presentation, the question that I asked you pertained to data from August 2020 until, um, today. And I think you only presented data for November, is that correct?
I presented data for August 2020. I can tell you that the substitute data for August 2020 to today. And then those numbers of retirements and resignations, sorry that it's not clear, was actually August to November 2019 versus August to November 2020.
Can you put those back on the screen, please? Because I, that's not clear and I thought I was only looking at-
And I apologize, the August part was left off, but it was, the data that I did use was August to November of 2019. Whoops, let me go backwards. It should've said August to November 2019 versus 2020.
Okay, and then I want to, another question about these subs, because it's still, uh, kind of cloudy for me. Uh, it looks like we've only used, uh, allowed day-to-day subs since November the 2nd, and today is November the 17th, is that right?
Yes ma'am, that is correct. And, and I also would like to comment on what you said before, as we add more, um, grade levels, yes, we will get more sub requests. We, we completely expect that.
And then I want to go back to the number that you gave us. You said that we currently have a total of 957 subs on our roster?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, and then you also mentioned, uh, CPI, the agency that we use to hire our classified employees. How many, um, have been hired, how many subs have been hired, uh, through CPI since, um, uh, the return to, uh, schools?
So that's temporary, not part of our sub hiring? But C, I don't have that number for you for CPI, that's mostly for our EC and our, um, regular TAs. So that is something I can get to you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, I have, uh, I believe, one more question. Uh, when TAs are moved, uh, throughout the school, uh, to cover classes, for example, if a TA is covering one class for the first half of the day and then they are moved to another classroom for the second half of the school day, are they paid for, uh, uh, subbing the entire day or half-day?
Well, they are, they're subbing up if they're covering. So, they're going to get like, likely more than what they typically would get. And then if it's a full day, like what you said, they, they would get paid for the full day. If it's a half-day, we are working through that policy of them not getting paid for the half-day. So that is something actually we would like to, to see changed and actually look at that as a policy.
Okay, and I thought I only had one more question, but something just popped in, in my mind. I think that I asked you about, uh, retirees, uh, but, uh, and, um, a long-term, um, um, FMLA's, um, medical leave, but I did not ask about resignations and terminations. Do you have any data, uh, since August 2020?
Since August 2020? Am I going way too far? What just did I do to this presentation? Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Burke, could you ask the question again?
Yes, do you have any data for resignations or terminations, uh, beginning August 2020 up to today's date?
Yes ma'am, the resignation and terminations for certified employees is 147 from August- to November. And for classified, it's 102. And it's down from 2019 during that same period of time.
Yes, thank you so much. I apologize, you did show this previously, I apologize. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have some questions? No? Okay, is there a hand up?
Yes, this, this is, um, Board Member Mott Singer, and I just did have a question because I, I know in the summer, we surveyed teachers about their comfort with returning to school. I hear from people who tell me that they are hoping that they will not have to resign, but that if they have to go back in the classrooms, they will be resigning. Do we, have we done any kind of survey with our teachers about their, their willingness to come back in the classroom?
We haven't done surveys, however, we have shared with them the ability that they can ask for ADA accommodations if, if they have these concerns and we'll review it. We asked you to have a committee of legal, HR, and our Director of Nursing, Jennifer Corso, to review those concerns. And then we make determinations. So we're getting a lot of those requests and we think that's the best way to, to understand the requests and the needs.
And, and a lot of means with, in loosely in numbers, what is a lot of?
It's, um, we get the requests and then we send out the forms. We don't always get the forms back, admittedly, and it's, um, I would say the requests are into one hu, into the hundreds. And I'd like to give you an actual figure by tomorrow, but it's into the hundreds for the requests and then it's, it's probably half that or even less for getting all of the paperwork back.
So, so we have the ADA requests and then FMLA requests? Have we, have you seen an increase in FMLA requests?
I, yes, we have seen an increase and we have those requests and, um...
And those numbers, could you please get those numbers as well to the board?
Yes, ma'am, I can get you the numbers where we are now. Unfortunately, the reason you don't see a graph is because the information for last year for a comparison is not available. However, um, I do know just from working for my team, we definitely have more requests for that. And, but I will get you the numbers of our current level of FMLA.
Um, oh, and then the one other question that keeps coming up that I don't, is if someone is quarantined because of an exposure, particularly an exposure at their workplace, do they have to use their sick leave or is there another mechanism where their pay does not come from their personal sick leave?
So it depends on the situation. So we would, we want to see, you know, how sick the individual is. If it's, if it's a teacher and they're still able to teach, they wouldn't be using their sick leave. If it's a, a classified employee that's unable to come into work, we'd have to work through that, so, um, so it can, it can actually vary, but go ahead.
So, so imagine that I, I have been exposed at work and contact tracer tells me I have had a direct exposure. And by all the guidelines, I understand that person should be pulled out of, they should be quarantined. They could certainly tur, teach virtually from home, but they could not come in the building. And the, the time of quarantine actually should be 14 days from a time of exposure. Is that covered by any COVID leave?
If they're still teaching and they're teaching remotely, then it wouldn't be necessary to do that. However, if they were sick or something and couldn't even teach remotely, then there are different leaves that are options for them.
So...
And we work with them on that. We, we, that's why HR will always be involved in this so that we can work through those leaves. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right, so, so if I got exposed and I could work from home, there would be no problem with my doing that for two weeks?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and if I got sick...
But again, I want to be clear, we take it case by case, we, we work through this with them, but go ahead.
Well, I mean, I, I am, again, I'm a healthcare provider and if you've had a direct exposure, you should quarantine for 14 days. And that doesn't mean if you were just in the same building, it means if you were within six feet of that person for more than 15 minutes over 24 hours, you've had a direct exposure. Those people, by CDC guidelines, are supposed to quarantine for 14 days. And my question is that that, you know, that isn't really a case-by-case expo, uh, issue that by any metric is you should not be in the building for 14 days.
Yes, ma'am, and we're really proud of our staff and our, um, teachers because they, they let us know these things and we work with them and they do the, the 14 days if we have a confirmed exposure, yes.
And, and that all of our staff can count on that, that that will be understood and accommodated?
It is understood and we, they, we've been supporting them through this to this point, yes, and we will continue to.
And can I just add also that if an, if an employee is quarantined and they're not able to work for some reason, there is also leave available under the FF-CRA. So there's an opportunity for them to receive, um, payment for a period of time under that leave as well.
Exactly.
So what I will say before we, um, entertain Board Member Burke's question is that we are at 9:30 and by way of our bylaws, we do not go beyond the 10:00 PM mark. So our board would have to, you know, vote to make an adjustment to go beyond 10:00 PM. So I would ask board members to be very concise with any question or comment so that we do not have to go beyond 10:00 PM and possibly another meeting. Board Member Burke?
I will, um, say that as a former educator right here in this district, that, uh, when there, uh, is a need for coverage, if we do not have subs available, we use our teachers and, uh, often they have to give up their planning time. Is that something that, uh, is being asked of our teachers currently?
I would need to ask some of the, the principals, but I imagine, yes, that that could be the case. But I would like to, um, talk to some principals about that for sure.
Oh, it, that, that is something that I would hope that we would have the answer to right off, right off, uh, the bat. But anyway, thank you so much for checking and I guess that you will email the board to, to give us that answer?
Absolutely. Thank you, Board Member Burke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, members of the board, and Ms. McManus. While Kevin is pulling up those slides, um, I'm gonna start talking to you about, um, screening. And one of the things that Ms. Mcmanage, McManus mentioned at the beginning of the presentation was that we keep learning things. And as we learn those things, um, we are pulling a team together and we are doing research and we are making adjustments. And so one of the things that we learned as we got into colder weather was thermometers work a little different. And so we have three different thermometers, um, that are handheld in all of our schools. Our pre-K classrooms, um, have a thermometer, we receive thermometers from the state, and then we also purchase additional thermometers for our schools. And so when we learned from the schools, the first week that our students came back, that they can be a little temporal, we did a lot of research and we provided information on November 4th to our schools. Um, and I happen to report that I've gotten great feedback as I've been out there, that this information has come in handy. One of the things that we did not consider was that the thermometers need to adapt to the ambient temperature in order to be able to be used. And so instead of trying to keep the thermometer inside in the heat before you go out in an early morning cold weather to screen, you actually take the thermometer outside and let it adapt before screening. And so we've seen a lot of improvements in the accuracy of those thermometers since then. Additionally, um, we've been in school for two weeks now, and so we've had two flex Wednesdays in our elementary and middle schools to be able to exercise our deep cleaning days. The reports that I've received from schools, those are going well. Again, a learning curve as our custodians learn how long it takes to, um, clean each of those spaces with the foggers. And it looks a little different in each one of those schools, depending on the number of classrooms that's being used, um, the number of teachers that may be teaching in that space. And so that will continue to adapt as we have different numbers in our spaces. We are currently, we have adjusted some of our custodial staffing, as we know that we have a larger number of students in some of our EC, um, schools and also our elementary schools. And so we continue to work with our schools, work with our facility specialists, and monitor that staffing so that we can ensure that they have the support that they need and also communicating with our contracted groups as well to make adjustments. And then when we talk about our personal protective equipment, um, I'm happy to report that all of the items that, um, were provided in the guidance for the NC, Strong Schools' NC Toolkit have been sent out to all of the schools. Um, we also have the PPE catalog that is on our website for viewing, um, that schools and our office buildings have access to at all times, um, to be able to continuously order those items. Again, kind of uncharted territory and knowing exactly how quickly we're gonna go through some of those supplies. And every school's going to be slightly different based on the enrollment each day. And so they have that available to them. There are also additional items, um, that I spoke to you all about last week, um, and that is our clear face mask, that is not a required item, but an additional item. So I'm happy to report, um, that those have been placed on order, um, and I'm hoping they'll be here by the end of the month. And we have also sent our face shields, which is an additional item, out to all of our certified staff. And I believe we do have a, a few locations where we need to get a couple extra out, um, in our high school levels to make sure that they have what they need. Any questions as we progress forward?
I have one, um, have we gotten the smaller masks for pre-K and kindergartners? I keep hearing that the standard size mask is, you know, the one-size-fits-all does not fit the smallest children.
Correct, so the state provided us with, um, five masks for every student and every staff member, they are one size. Um, and so NC, um, the Strong Schools' NC Toolkit provided guidance specific for those state-provided masks on how to make adjustments. Um, you'll actually see, if you, if we can see up close on the mask that I'm wearing, I actually have ear loops, um, tied on the back of mine, which is the recommendation. There's no material needed, there's no choke hazard for our pre-K and our kindergarten students to allow them to fit a little bit better.
So, so to follow up on that, that was the same question I had. I was at a school this morning and I guess the white mask are the ones that they, they gave, and they were trying to adjust them and, um, you know, it, um, I'm just, that, they were wondering, and I think actually the principal had even gotten some of the small, um, paper, um, child-sized masks. Are we gonna look into doing any, any of that or at least getting ways to adjust the, the white mask for the, for the small pre-K K's ones?
Sure, since we provided the guidance on making those adjustments, I have not gotten any feedback that that guidance was not working. Um, so if we need to look at collecting more of that and then looking at either going with a disposable mask that is smaller or possibly purchasing one, we can certainly explore that.
Okay, good, yeah, they were, that, that was one, one biggie they had for me today, so.
Thank you.
I saw the same thing today at one of the elementary schools, it was hard to make the adjustment. And I don't know if there's just a disconnection, a communication of how to appropriately adjust, but just FYI.
Yeah, definitely something for us to look into further, thank you.
Uh-huh, the only question I have is, do we have a cleaner that's different than the number nine if someone has a reaction to it?
So the number nine is being phased out by the manufacturer, um, and is being converted to number 19, ironically. Um, and so there are schools that already have that. Um, as, as that school runs out of that product, then they are being replaced with the number 19. And so we have, um, Ms. Ms. Fana Reid spoke to you about some ADA accommodations and other things, and so we are looking into other things that are possibly out there, um, to look and see if we need to make an adjustment. But some of the things that we have provided, um, to support those that, that may have concerns are, um, the gloves that are available, um, in all of the schools that they can continuously order as well. Um, and the, the disinfectants that are part of the category that do clean coronavirus tend to be stronger, um, more commercial grade, um, but we are continuing to assess that and I'm, I'm hopeful that the number 19 will also work for individuals.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I, could I just ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you so much for being so thorough, I appreciate everybody's, all their work because it's been a lot, I know that. Ventilation is something that is so concerning because it really is, what we're learning is that it's so much more pass-through aerosols in the room. So if you take off your mask to eat lunch, the aerosols are still gonna be present in the room for hours. What is the, do we have a standard on air turnover rates in the rooms in different schools? Are teachers, are principals aware of their individual building?
Yes, Board Member Mott Singer, we've actually adjusted, um, our runtimes on our schools. In, in past years, we have adjusted the building runtimes in order to be more energy efficient. And during this time, all of our school and office buildings are actually running 24 hours a day to ensure that there is constant airflow in those locations. We are also gradual... I'm sorry?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. And so that, that is something that we're continuing to monitor. Um, we also have two automated technicians that are regularly looking at systems, um, to ensure proper operation, um, and then also doing regular preventative maintenance, which includes changing out the air filters, um, and, and keeping those up to date, um, for better airflow as well.
Okay, that, that's something that this is so concerning because that seems to be the most common way this is spread, so, um, I just want to make sure we're paying a lot of attention to that.
Yes, ma'am.
To ventilat... I just want to make sure the ventilation is a top priority. And I'm just wondering, do we know what the standard is on airflow turnaround in a room?
Uh, I can certainly gather more information on that for you. Um, at this time, I can tell you that those systems are running 24 hours a day, um, and so those air intakes are constantly pooling and recycling that air.
Yeah, if you could find out how many, you know, how many times in an hour the air recirculates, that would be really helpful information.
Certainly, we can get that data for you, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I, I have sort of received an update, um, I, I think through Ms. McManus, that we will need some additional time to, um, accommodate the rest of this presentation and to get through our action items. So I'll go ahead and ask the board to, um, be patient and kind and, um, not necessarily grant me the privilege, but be patient with the privilege of the chair to try to get through this meeting a little beyond 10 o'clock ideally. So I, I wanted to just let the audience know that we need to make some adjustments to accommodate the rest of, uh, Ms. McManus' presentation, thank you.
Okay, um, I'm gonna ask Jevlyn if you can give me a five-minute, I'm gonna try to talk fast, so we will get back, so you give me my, my warning, I'm gonna try to be down to five minutes. Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Vice Chair Calvert-Hayes, board members, and Ms. McManus. I want to give an update on our instructional, um, uh, platform, how we've been providing support for our students. Um, and as we brought our pre-K K students back in our first grade, um, our focus is on our early literacy and our core instruction for our students. We know how important it is to close the achievement gap and the longer we wait to close the gap, the wider the gap becomes. And so the best investment is to close the gap as soon as possible, and that is our focus. And so for our early, um, grade students, we're focusing on that foundational reading skills for those students. We do know, however, that ideally 120 minutes of instruction is what is required for our students. That is not what we're able to do right now in our current setting and we recognize that. So during our remote instruction plan, our students had less instructional time. As students return to the classroom, we want to increase that time, ultimately getting to that 120, but we know that we're not in that state right now. We want to make sure that we are focused on core instruction and making sure that it's a solid core for our students and then providing additional supports. And so as I mentioned, we do have lost instructional time since we closed school in March and our students had to go to a remote setting. The data that's on this chart shows you our at-risk students. This is based on grades. This was from last year, November 2019 when we were in a traditional setting. It shows the number of students that had either a D or an F in at least one core subject area in November of 2019 as compared to now, November 2020. So we do see that we have an increase in the number of students who have Ds and Fs and that is a concern for us. The last column shows you how many of those same students in November 2020 have more than one grade that is, so it's of that same group or number you see in the second column. How many of those kids are failing or have a D or F in two or more courses? And that last column shows you that number. And so that is a concern again for us. And we know that our, our teachers have been extremely resilient, innovative, creative in this remote instruction environment. And now as students are returning, our support staff and principals have been supportive and our families, our parents have done a tremendous job of becoming the at-home educator for their child during this time. And so what we're asking, parents, if you can please monitor the power school, your child's grades. If you see any concerns, let the teacher know. Please reach out to the teachers around office hours to make sure that you're getting the support you need for your child. Students, specifically our middle school students, please turn in your work on time. Some of these grades are due to just not turning in assignments. So please, students, monitor your own grades and make sure you're turning in your work on time. And students, ask for help if you need it, please. And then teachers, please continue to reach out to your students and provide them the additional small group instruction during your office hours or your small group days on flex days. But we really need to continue to make sure we're supporting all students. This is the same data, but just in a graph form. So the blue represents 2019, or 2019, I'm sorry, 2019. And the gold is 2020. And the 19, or the purple, is a percentage of those same kids in gold that have two or more grades that they're failing. So it's the same information, but just in a graph form. So you do see from one year to the next, we have increased the number of students who have a D or F. And the purple represents how many of those students have more than one core subject with a D or F. So please help us to help the students be successful. The next few graphs are some graphs that were provided by Andy Kraft and the Accountability Department. And this shows the number of students from the beginning of school until now that have had no activity at all in Canvas during an entire week. At the beginning of the school year, we had almost, almost 4,000. And thanks to the support of our cares team, our principals, our counselors, our teachers, our technology team under Kevin Sherrill, providing the supports, those numbers went down to our lowest number at the beginning of October, about 2,000. It's starting to tick back up again. There are two reasons for that and I'll go over that in a minute. But we want to make sure that our families know that we're still accessing curriculum through Canvas. This is the same data, but just in a percentage format showing you right now, we have about 6% of students that are not going into Canvas during that week. This graph shows it by demographic data, our racial subgroup data. Our Hispanic and African-American students have a higher percentage of not engaging in Canvas. And so we want to drill down to find out why that is, but we do have some concerns. We want to make sure it's not due to connectivity issues or supports that the families need or language supports that families need to access their Canvas curriculum. And then this one shows by grade span. So the higher number is elementary and that is to be expected since many of our younger students have the wonders hands-on curriculum that they're using for their reading. And not all of our students were using Canvas as the primary source, especially as our pre-K, K and 1 students have returned to school. So that is to be expected. And you see that again in this next one, which is by grade level. And so the blue being on the top is our kindergarten, then first, second, and so forth. So you do see the highest number of kids not on Canvas are our K and 1 students and that makes sense based on the curriculum and what they're being taught. And then finally, the last two slides I just wanted to share. We have been helping our teachers, thank you again to the Technology Department and to our Teacher Effectiveness Team. And then to our teachers, they have learned a tremendous amount in the last nine months about how to teach students remotely. And what they've been charged with now as our students are returning pre-K, K and 1 is to teach concurrently, both the students that are in front of them in the classroom and the ones that are at home. And the term is called concurrent classrooms, teaching them at the same time. And it's a challenge. It's something new. It's something different. And so want to thank our teachers for their resilience, their innovation, their flexibility. It's not easy, but we really thank them for all that they're doing to support all students. And so our team has helped this transition by giving sample lesson plans, video demonstrations, sample schedules, layouts, training and support to help the teachers make this transition and we'll continue to support them as we move forward. All right, I hope I stayed within my timeframe. All right, we're going to turn it over to Sheila.
And I'll see if there are questions at the end.
Good evening Chair Woodbury, Members of the Board. I'm new here. My name is Sheila Thorpe. I'm the new Executive Director of Social Work.
Welcome to Winston-Salem State County Schools.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to say a little bit about social emotional needs and learning. Student resiliency. Resiliency is the ability to be flexible and adapt to adverse life events. Our students who have returned have demonstrated beyond a doubt that they have the skills and strategies to be resilient. They are wearing masks. They are engaged. They are learning. They are playing outside and they are lighting the way for all of us. School staff are dedicated to student success. School counselors and social workers are at schools daily to provide support for student, student, staff and families. There's an employee assistance program available for staff needing support. There are therapists providing outpatient counseling in schools now. We have those contracts going. The School Health Alliance has continued to serve students throughout the district through all this time. And just a little bit about social work intervention. Since the beginning of the school year, this is for this school year, we've had 4,393 family contacts. We've helped 264 families with tangible needs like food, clothing and supplies. 1,665 contacts regarding attendance, 1,383 contacts regarding academics, 571 contacts regarding general family support. And the social workers have done 1,131 home visits. And this is, this is not cares teams data. This is what we're doing in the schools.
So this last slide just shows resources that are available. And I know questions have been asked along the way. I know that was very extensive and long, but we really wanted you all to have a clear picture of what's been happening in our schools. And so is there any questions or can I do the final?
Go ahead and do the final.
Okay. So if, if you would not mind, and this might, this is going to take five more minutes, but I really, I hope you don't mind that I do this. But because of the outpouring of emails, I mean, I have received along with the board members, so many emails in the last two to three days. And first of all, I want to thank everyone for your outreach. I think it's important that people have a voice. And I do like to respond to emails, but I can promise you in the last two days, if you emailed me, you did not get a response potentially because I think there's about 200 in my draft that I need to respond to at this point. But I did want to actually share a couple of things and I, I wrote something. I hope you don't mind if I read it because I think it's very important when we're making decisions that are this critical. And we want to do what's best for kids so much that we have to, I have to paint the picture to you so you understand the, the recommendation that, that my team and I, I specifically am about to make to the board. First of all, every single email I got, no matter what anyone said, said congratulations and well, gave me well wishes. And I think that speaks volumes of this community and I thank you for that and I'm very honored to serve as your interim superintendent. Thank you to those who have been respectful of diverse opinions. These are challenging times and the worst thing we can do is point fingers at each other, make those who are fearful feel unheard, or make those who want students in schools feel like they don't care about the health and wellbeing of others. Do you realize both of these viewpoints are based on what is best for students? Making others feel bad about their feelings is not appropriate. It's not going to help us come together as a community to actually prevent the increasing positive cases we are seeing in the Health Department data. What this pandemic has shown is just how important our schools are and how invaluable educators are in the lives of our students. In-person school offers a wide variety of health and educational benefits. We are seeing learning loss. We are seeing students struggling every day socially, emotionally, mentally. You saw some of those students come up today. We can see engagement numbers dropping as you just saw and we can see more students not doing as well in class. And we cannot ignore that. And so I'm going to get to how we need to address that together. One other thing that has bothered me that I wanted to, to call out is I, I don't want people to say that parents are only looking for babysitters. That's not true. What they are looking for is for their children to be happy. And if you are a parent, you know that's why you're, that's what you live for, is to make sure your children are happy. And so what parents want is for their kids to be happy, positive and excelling. And the worst thing that you feel is when your parent is struggling, is when your child is struggling. So basically, I, I'm speaking from a parent's point of view. Many of you saw last Friday, I have two daughters and one of them has Down Syndrome. And I can promise you, she's 21 now. Last year she was in remote learning in March. And it was quite a challenge to, to keep her engaged and learning. She loved getting on Zoom to see her friends. I was always loved, I loved at that point too because that was the part that she actually liked doing. So I understand those parents that have children with special needs, those parents that are struggling every day. I, I understand that. I understand that very, very well. On the other side, I understand that this virus is real and that the fear people have of it spreading is real. You heard Jennifer Corso share some of the data. You've seen the Health Department data. You've heard it from some of the speakers. The number of positive cases are rising and we have to validate how our teachers are feeling and how many of our families feel as well. They feel safer at home. This does not mean that teachers who want to continue with remote instruction do not care about their students. Actually, the majority of emails I've, I've received from teachers, they start out every time with, "I want you to first and foremost know how much I want to be at school with my students." They just don't feel like it's a safe time to do that. The transition to remote learning has been hard on everyone. And for all those who have contracted the virus at all in our, in our community or who have a family member that is ill from the virus, you know, I pray that you have speedy recovery. I also wanted to call out the family of Ms. Skaether. I wanted to make sure you know, my heart goes out to you, all of us. Our heart goes out to your family. The loss of a parent or a grandparent, a wife, a child is a tragedy and one that I am so sorry you're having to face right now. Once again, I want to reiterate, the fear that people have is real. As far as those folks, and we have freedoms, that, that's what's so great about our country. We have freedom of speech. We have freedom of everything. As far as those who want to be disruptive to make your point, please focus that energy on doing what's best for our students. Our data will not, would not be where it is if we would all focus that energy to find solutions for our kids, even when they're at home. Because whatever decision we make tonight, there is a large group of kids that are still going to be home, learning remotely. And so it is our responsibility to make sure that they have what they need. I'll tell you, when we got in this profession, we made a commitment. We made a commitment to education and I am challenging everybody to go back to your why, everybody to go back to your why of why do we do this work. I met a teacher at Parkland in, at the Ed Building this week. And guess what she was doing? She was on her way to deliver incentives to students' homes who had logged in during the week and had made that incentive. That is what it's going to take. It's going to take creative, out of the box thinking. The, the students that were in here today, there should be no student up here crying because what we should be doing is going to their home, making sure they have what they need. What do we need to do? Do we need to do spirit days every day where they get to dress up? Do we need to do, what do we need to do to reach every child while they are home learning? That's where we need to put our focus. I'm almost done. Someone asked me in one of the emails, "What if this were your brother, your sister, your mother?" They asked that. Well, that was the wrong question because I come from a family of teachers. I think it runs in the, it's in the blood. And so basically, I have four siblings that are teaching right now in classrooms in Florida. They've been teaching since August and they've been teaching five days a week. And Tiffany, I called Tiffany this morning. She teaches third grade. She has 19 children in her classroom. They do not have a screening process as kids come in the door. And they do not, they're not able to social distance in the classroom. They wear masks. So I, I bring this up to say that there are many people around this country doing this same thing. And I will say, she's seen success. They've had limited spread in her school. And so one thing that she was worried about was this. She teaches ELA to 39 third graders. And she said, Tricia, out of 39, nine are on grade level right now. Nine. She teaches in a very high need school and nine kids. And so what her focus was, was I have nine kids that are not on grade level. And we all know the research and that is that students that are, are not reading on grade level by third grade are four times more likely to not graduate high school. That, that, and guess what happens then? They're set up for a lifetime of struggles. We have to get our kids reading. We have to make sure they're literate. I've had people tell me, we can catch, catch them up. And I'm going to tell you, we're going to, we are, that's what we're going to do. But it's not, it's going to take everybody and it's going to take outside of the box thinking because if it was so easy to catch kids up, would we have after decades have achievement gaps between white students and black and Hispanic students that we have today? If it was that easy to catch up, our data would not look like that. So I'm going to tell you, if you've got ideas for how to do that when we do get kids back, we got to do whatever it takes. I don't care, I don't care if it's year-round schooling. I may be up here one day asking for year-round because we've got to meet the needs of our kids. I say all that to let you know that I'm here for our students. My whole team is here for our students, our families and this entire community. And the decisions we make will always be in the best interest of all of those groups of people, especially, especially our beautiful students who we are so honored and privileged to serve every day. As I read my recommendation and then the board can decide how they want to move forward, please know that with so many of our students still in remote learning, we have to come together, re-energize our learners and make sure they are seeing success. Please join me in thinking outside the box and helping kids connect with their education, but also connect with each other. I implore, implore everyone to please, let's start working together to do this. I also implore everyone to please be safe, as safe as possible. Follow the mitigation strategies, not only in school, but please outside of school so that we can bring our kids back to school. That is what everybody has said they want to do. So I implore us all working together on that same, same vision. So my recommendation, and this is going to be based on the fact that it is really late in the year. We don't have much time left. And to bring back another group of kids when we don't have a lot of time left can be very extremely disruptive, even to homes, to schedule, to, to, to families. And especially if we're bringing them back, sending them home, bringing them back, that is not a good thing for kids. Because the worst thing that happens is our kids are so excited, you turn around and send them home and it's, it's, it is not good. That doesn't mean safety is not critical though. So here's my recommendation. I don't think we should bring back any groups of students before January. I think we need to not bring back any other groups at this time. But I will say what I think is very important is that when we get after the holidays, that we bring folks back in a little bit more of an aggressive timeline. So my recommendation is, we do not bring any groups of students back now. On January 11th, we work to bring back if our, if, if the data is right and we can come back together and make sure, I'm hoping with all of us working collectively as an entire community, it starts to go back down. But if it's right, on January 11th, I'd like to bring back grades two, three. And also then start with our middle schoolers in grade six and bring them back in cohorts as we had planned. The week after, January 18th, bring back grades four and five who are going to be in cohort. So those numbers- in cohort, so those numbers will be down. And then bring back grades seven and eight in their cohorts. And on January 21st, which would be the first day of the second semester, bring back our high school students. That is my recommendation. I will tell you, someone asked about a survey. We, I do, I haven't mentioned this to the staff, I do want to get a survey out to every one of our teachers and every one of our families. Once again, we have now, what, five weeks before Christmas, or six weeks, something like that? We have time, if this motion is accepted, to do what we need to do to get feedback from teachers. I want feedback on how they're feeling about the mitigation strategies in their schools. I want feedback on how many of them want to be in schools, how many of them, where, and I'm not saying, we need the data. How many parents, if we were to come back in January using the schedule, want to come? Has your mind changed? Are there more that want to be home? And then we can do some really good planning, and we can, we can be ready for those that are going to return. We've been ready. Those, those people that say we don't have, the kids in school right now, come and watch them if, well, you can't, if you're a visitor, you can't, sorry. But if you can, if I could take videos, you will be very amazed by our kiddos. So that's my recommendation. And I, we really thank you for the extended time this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Actually, I would prefer, if we had those questions, probably at the action, well, maybe if we can ask them now, then when we get to the action item, we won't have to go into further question and discussion. So are there any questions for the board for clarity around the Safe Return Update and Staged Reentry Plan? Board member Mott Singer?
Yes, thank you so much, Ms. McManus. This was a very heartfelt and wonderful thing, and I think we have to stop demonizing people who see things differently. So I appreciate what you said very much, and I'm glad we have you here. My question is, during this time, can we be focused on agreeing on a set of metrics so that the community can see in reality what it is that we need to feel like it's safe for everybody to have them in schools? And I know we're not doing that tonight. I know that's a whole other conversation. But I do want us to come up with something that lets our community see in reality, this is what we're looking at, this is what's safe, and this is when it's really not safe.
So I will respond to that. I know that our, and I know Val Young is in here. I hope you don't mind, you don't mind me calling you out, but they, I know that you all have done some work around what you think a good metric would be. I, what I'm going to say is, I would be open to it if our board is open to it, if our folks are open to it, to start having that discussion. Of course, obviously, with many health professionals and other folks that could guide us in that, in that kind of decision. So we, we can bring that as a next step back to the table.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board member Burke, then I'll get you, board member Crowley. Thank you. Board member Burke?
Yes, I wanted to also say thank you, Ms. McManus. Thank you so much. And I also want to agree with board member Mott Singer. Before we agree on the timeline, or as we agree on this timeline that you set, which is good, I would also like for us to agree on a set of metrics. So I just wanted to make that statement and again, say thank you.
Thank you. Board member Crowley, and then I'll get board member Bremer.
Thank you. I appreciate your recommendation. And one thing that I'm very concerned about is waiting until January specifically for second and third graders. With them being in the mode of learning to read, and they can't read to learn yet, that really concerns me, that they could miss, even it looks like, just looking at a calendar, it could be three weeks of instruction. Given that this age group has lower COVID rates, and also given that these class sizes are smaller, and, and with it being elementary, that, that teacher's exposure is reduced. I mean, one of the things that we've talked about is how middle school and high school teachers could be exposed to easily 120 students per day, whereas elementary will probably average more like 25. That would lower that risk. And then after seeing the data tonight, I'm really concerned, because the trend is going up in, in all age groups, but it's even higher for those, for the elementary. And is it something, is it something that you considered of getting second and third grade back a little sooner?
Definitely. We, that was honestly, a few days ago, that is exactly what I was going to do. As we talked, as we talked as a team about the schedule, it actually, the week after Thanksgiving, we had thought, let's leave that, since everyone seems very worried about right after the holidays. We had thought about leaving a week, so it came down to two weeks. So actually, I have asked a lot of people, I've asked teachers, I, I met with our elementary assistant principals today to talk about the two weeks and what would happen in that period. I talked with our team this morning and yesterday, and probably every day, they're pretty tired of me at this point, probably, but talking about, would that be worth in a family schedule? And, and to bring kids back for eight days, it would really be eight days if you're talking about in person. And so as I, the feedback I got was that it would not be as advantageous if, if they, if we could continue the learning and not transition, continue the learning now, do more interventions, and then bring them back that first day possible. And really hit, hit it hard. I mean, hit the learning hard and do whatever we can. If we need to do other innovative things when they come back for the loss, that's where I want to really focus our attention and, and what we can do during that, that loss. But no, I was coming today with second and, with second and third, because those are other critical years. And you heard the data that I quoted.
Will pre-K kindergarten and first be in the week after Thanksgiving?
Yes, I did not plan, in my, in my, in my recommendation, I did not send kids home. And that is because it is, I just, I cannot feel good about sending our, our pre-K and E, our EC students home when they just got started. And we are looking at the data on our dashboard. We are paying attention to internal data, and we just don't, I'm not, I do not want to recommend sending them home.
I think we have board member Bremer.
Yes, I'll try to make this as quick as I possible, like I can, because I know everybody's getting tired, but I disagree with not sending them home, because the scientists are theorizing that the reason that there is low levels in the younger children is because we protected them, and we kept them home for so long, they simply were not exposed to the same level as the rest of the population. And now that they are being exposed, they are exponentially growing and not test members. So that's out there. But what I would like to really consider is that the medical professionals don't know everything about this disease still yet, and it's actually killing them as much as it's killing us, with everything they know. So when we get vaccines and we start learning more about this data, we should review it as it's learned, and not assume now that we know everything about it, because we don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Board member Burke, is your hand up?
Yes, very quickly. Ms. McManus, will teachers be required to return to the building, the buildings at the end of the month, or will this apply to, the January date apply to them as well?
So we are, I'm going to be sending a letter. I did not include anything about teachers in the, in my comments tonight, as far as the recommendation, but I am going to be sending a memo to them. We are still working out details. One of the reasons we wanted teachers back early, in high school, so early before they're students, they received a letter about many reasons. But one of those was to get training on some of our camera systems, and some of those, in, in high school, they're not all set up yet. So we're actually, we are going to be devising a memo to teachers to adjust some of those timeframes. And so that'll be coming out very, in this week. Board member Burke?
Quickly, I just wanted to say to the board and to Ms. McManus, that I think, you know, initially, our board was very precautious around trying to set metrics, but I think the, there is a line between setting metrics and then what, what the CDC calls hard cutoffs around what a number should be or shouldn't be as it relates to determining whether you go back to school. I think as the CDC has empowered their guidelines through more information, because we're learning as this COVID, you know, takes place, then they have, the CDC has been that much more intentional around providing more up-to-date guidance for school officials. I would just like to highlight that two aspects of the CDC guidelines that we need to consider. One, the purpose of the indicators, which we have been very fixed on, and we should be highly influenced by those, you know, indicators as it relates to the number of new cases per 100,000 over 14 days, the percent of positive cases per 14 days. And then, of course, those mitigating factors, which we have, you know, more control over as it relates to a system. But the CDC, you know, responds to the question that, how to determine when it is safe to open schools for in-person learning. Their answer is, there is no easy answer or single indicator. Many variables must be considered. I would also like to highlight that the CDC is very intentional around application and interpretation of the data, because we just say data, data. And I would like to disclaim, I am no psychometrician, although I came into contact with, I believe, one of the best in our state, Dr. Gung Shuzang, who set the accountability standards for North Carolina ABC. And so he always taught us, as we were trying to transform schools, don't look at just the hard data in isolation. How do you interpret it and then apply it? So I am very glad to see that the CDC is very intentional around the application, interpretation of these indicators. And one of the points that the CDC highlighted is that each indicator or combination of indicators should neither be used in isolation, nor should they be viewed as hard cutoffs by school district decision-makers. Rather, they serve as broad guideposts of inherent risk to informed decision-making. So I think that all of this is to say that as we move forward to determine metrics, that we consider the indicators to help us to move our schools in, or move our students and our staff back to school safely without hard cutoffs, because I think once we get into those hard cutoffs, we are actually moving away from CDC guidelines, instead of creating some guideposts that really consider what's going on in our community in relationship to the risk that when children are not in school, the detrimental loss to learning and their chance at, you know, a good life. I think we have to consider a multitude of things to move us forward. So I appreciate Ms. McManus' time to help us at this time to be guided back in a very, I think, productive and effective way. And so with that being said, I'll move us into our action items very quickly.
Chair Wood, I was still, excuse me, I apologize. I was still speaking, and I know my mic was inadvertently cut off, but I did want to say to Ms. McManus, that the middle school teachers, I believe, have already been trained with the cameras. And because our community numbers are in the red, and because we know that we are safer at home, can we just not require our teachers to return at this time? In addition, we have the Thanksgiving holiday coming up, and we know what that can do to spike our numbers even more. So as you are preparing to write your letter, please give that consideration. And I do appreciate your recommendation, again, Ms. McManus. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we didn't realize there were some technical issues with your audio, Ms. Burke. So the first action item is to consider approval of the budget resolution. Is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
If there are no further question, or are there further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, board member Mott Singer. Board member Bremer?
Aye, yes.
Board member Burke?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next action item is to consider approval of the local growth bonus for principals. Is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Are there any questions or discussion? All in favor? Board member Bremer?
Aye.
Board member Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. The next item for consideration is the approval of the staff laptop deployment services. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move to approve. Third.
Are there questions or discussion? All in favor? Board member Bremer?
Aye.
Board member Burke?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item is to consider approval of the PRC 135 State Cyber Security Funding. Is there a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Uh, board, board member?
Aye.
Okay, board member Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. The next item is to consider approval of the middle school redistricting public hearings only. Is there a motion?
Move, move to approve. Second.
If there are no further questions or discussions, all in favor? Board member Bremer?
Aye.
Board member, board member Burke?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is to consider approval of the new course proposals. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. If there are no further questions or discussion, all in favor? Board member?
Aye.
Thank you. Board member Burke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Motion passes. The next item is to consider approval of Beginning Teacher Support Plan. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
If there are no further question or discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Board member Burke?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Last item is to consider approval for Safe Return Update and Staged Reentry Plan. Is there a motion?
Chair Woodbier, I make a motion that we continue with the recommendation of our interim superintendent.
Any further question or discussion? I would like to add that we look at the week when we come back, because we all know that that week after Thanksgiving may be, you know, a period that we don't want to enter back, and we need to fall back another week. And so I, I don't know if it's the will of this board to adjust the, adjust that motion to include looking at the week after Thanksgiving before we come back, or if we just would like the superintendent to, you know, inform us whether students will come back on the 30th or December the 4th, which would be, I guess, a week after, or what, two weeks after Thanksgiving.
Chair Woodbier?
I thought you said January.
Do you mean the, do you mean, I'm asking, clarifying, do you mean the students that are still in school now?
Yes.
The ones that would just, like, are you saying you would want a week for them not to come back?
Oh, okay, so, yes, so I guess my assumption is that the ones that are in right now, pre-K to first, that after Thanksgiving, they would come back December, or correct? I mean, after the Thanksgiving break, they would come back on the 30th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so all I'm saying is, would, do we want to consider an additional week, which would put them coming back December the 4th to accommodate the concern around right after Thanksgiving?
We, I mean, we could make that a, if, if the board wants to do that, we could make that a remote learning week if, if that, but. if, if that, but... Or just, or just leave it and, and?
I, I, I'll, I mean, the, the motion I have, I'm, I'm not gonna, I don't, I don't want to change that, but if someone wants to uh, propose a substitute or something. Um, but I, I think um, the kids that are, that are there, um, they're on, on, on a schedule and bring them back.
So I would ask to make a substitute to um, at least consider that after Thanksgiving, there is some consideration to move students back December the 4th instead of the 30th.
Are you just, uh, so for my clarification, Chair Woodberg, are you asking that we just, can, that we would just make that next week of all remote learning?
Yes.
Because we wouldn't have data because they haven't been in there, it's just? Just be frank.
I think we would definitely have to look at what's happening in the community to kind of make some assumptions around, do we want to bring them back if there is some stress points going on after Thanksgiving? I, I mean, I, I see your concern, you know, Board Member Jones.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of doing the um, the recommendation as, as laid out by our interim.
I'm being heard. Um, can I, uh, um, I'd like to just make a comment first, I think this is kind of?
So Ms., the Board, Board Member Mott Singer, just to maintain Robert Ruse, I have made a substitute motion and it has not been seconded. Um, so um, if it has not been seconded, then it, it fails unless you're going to second that motion.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Can, can I address the first substitute motion?
Fourteen days following Thanksgiving.
I second that motion. This is Board Member Burke.
So, so right now, we're at a substitute motion with consideration to come back on the, on December the 4th for pre-K to first grade. And Ms. Bremer, are you seconding that, seconded substitute motion?
No, I, I'm issuing, since I failed, I'm issuing a second one saying for the full 14 days as recommended by the CDC.
Oh, okay.
And I second since the first motion failed and I made a second to Mrs. Bremer's, our Board Member Bremer's motion.
Oh, so can I get clarification about Ms. Bremer's motion? What, 14 days from what point?
Let me. I believe that Mrs. Bremer, Mrs. Bremer, are you asking to follow Mrs. McManus' recommendation for everyone to?
For all the students to?
To return January 11th?
No, I'm saying everyone returns January 11th, but they want to view the, the pre-K to first and easy students, which would bring it up to December 14th.
So Ms. Burke, are you?
Two weeks after Thanksgiving?
Ms. Burke, did you?
Well, two things, right, two things, Thanksgiving ends up actually on December 10th.
Okay, so right now, just for clarity, so we're all clear. Um, Andrea Bremer made an additional substitute motion that has been seconded by Board Member Burke. Are there questions and discussion around the substitute motion of Board Member Bremer?
What, what is the motion?
Yeah, very, uh, this is Board Member Burke and I'm sorry, maybe it's the technology, but I really thought that Board Member Bremer's recommendation was for everyone, teachers and students, even uh, the students who are currently attending, to stay at home and not return until January 11th. That is the motion that I thought I was making a second for. I do apologize.
Okay.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with that motion.
Uh?
So, this is Elizabeth and?
Ms. Mott Singer, let us, let us clear up, let us clear up some things now.
We're struggling with the technology.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, uh, what I would like to say is I think that trying to change motions is actually muddying the waters rather than helping. And I would, my own personal wish would be to go back to the original motion, vote on that and then if anybody wants to make an additional motion, but to first vote on the recommendation that Mrs. McManus gave to us.
So?
As she gave it to us.
So Board Member Mott Singer, thank you for, you know, what your suggestion is, but by way of Robert Ruse, I did have a substitute, it did not get a second. So Ms. Bremer had a substitute, I think Board Member Burke seconded it and we were in um, discussion. There was some clarification around what Ms. Bremer's substitute motion was and it was cleared up um, by way of Board Member Burke. So right now, any questions or discussion? And Deion, you can correct me if this is where we are with Robert Ruse. Any further question or discussion around the substitute motion that Board Member Bremer and then Board Member Burke seconded?
Do I need to keep my original one? Do I need to keep my original one? Cause my original one was actually that teachers and pre-K and third?
So, so Ms. Bremer?
Stay home until December the 10th. That was my original secondary motion, is 14 days, which puts us at December 10th, two weeks after Thanksgiving. And then everybody else follow the recommendation of the superintendent, which was January.
Okay, so that, that's where I sort of got lost. I thought that what Board Member Burke was your clarification. So it, the original substitute motion for Board Member Bremer says that we don't come back until December the 10th. Is there a second for that still, Board Member Burke?
No, there's not a second for that.
Okay, thank, thank you. So that, that motion does not um, go forward because there is no second. So I think we're back at the original motion of the um, superintendent.
I'd like to make an additional substitute motion that we not return uh, to school, students or staff, even current students until January 11th.
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Let it, Board Member Bremer?
Yes.
Board Member Burke?
Yes.
Board Member Mott Singer?
No.
Okay, the motion fails. So now we're back at the original?
So can I, do I need to make my original motion to, um, that we follow the recommendation set before us tonight by the interim?
Y, y, yes.
We revert back to that automatically?
Yeah, we are, we are, we, we, yeah, back that, we're back at that automatically. Is there, is that a second? Is there a second?
Ms. Calvert-Hayes already said that one.
Yeah, I think Ms. Calvert-Hayes seconded it.
Okay, yeah. If there are no further questions or discussion, um, all in favor? Uh, Board Member Bremer?
No.
Board Member Burke? Board Member Burke?
No.
Board Member Mott Singer?
Yes.
Okay, the um, motion passes. The next agenda item is to consider the consent, consent agenda items, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
If there are no further questions or discussion, all in favor? Board Member?
Yes.
Board Member Bremer?
Yes.
Board Member Burke?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The next item is um, the meeting open to public. There any two? Um, the first person we have for um, open comics is Mr. Alan Daniel and I'll say we're gonna still keep it at one minute tonight.